No, you can. That's the reason why I called you morning. It's because I was at my computer and I'm here myself. When I did, the option is that you have to pass it. And then you make that. I don't have this thing for all of you. You have to do it. What I do is as soon as I hear some bad, I don't.
You're ready?
Yes.
You're gonna have to do that.
So what John did last night, which I thought was very cool, was you go talk to them, see what they're gonna say. And then I had to bet you that you should do it. Just to give you.
Happy almost New Year.
Actors, how can you be busy?
Yeah. Actually, when he comes in, I'll.
Of course, I don't know what's inside.
You know, but you can.
Yeah, wasn't helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to brief him.
Good. Yeah. So that would be. Yeah. I don't know what you're calling it. Sure. So here's something that can happen. Not this computer. So.
Hey, John. Good. That's exciting. Great job. You outside.
Christmas.
You work.
That's what I do, too. Trick or treat.
Shouldn't be said.
We get the good news in the office like this tonight. You know. We get the good news. You see. Hey, buddy. You need not this computer. You know. Yeah, Jerry. What are you doing this time? No, they do not want transportation. Yeah, so this, this computer, this email is. You have the. Good. So I could help in any way with that. I mean, you have your opinion on that. Okay.
Hey, Trevor.
Good for you.
No, it makes sense.
You mean addition now?
Yeah.
Appreciate you. It really changed me.
Not salary.
I know you were just giving me. You just gave me information, which was very useful. Years ago, like, some communities, there was workshops, it used to be televised. So you could see how people got to their homes. You don't have that. You don't. Now you've just kinda, you left them guessing. When you could come in with a good explanation. But that's the way it's worked.
And it's the way I work. I bought all this stuff to make home this weekend. And then I got my boat, so I have a huge amount of.
Thanks for coming. Yeah. That was a great place.
Yeah, there's a, there's a happy medium, right?
Yeah.
There's a happy medium.
Yeah. Well, no. She's pretty.
Oh, okay.
You know what? You guys, I don't remember.
Doesn't really matter.
I did try to mix it up. I did try to mix it up.
Yeah. I'm calm. I just can't. You guys were guessing. I got a little specific.
Yeah. No. I guess we're guessing. I got a little specific. Yeah. No. Yeah. There was attraction. That's a huge thing. Lucky that we're. Driving half an hour out of the way. It's what they had and driving back.
I was like.
So I just really, I think we could help.
Shut up. It should be a barn.
My computer. Oh, okay. My computer. It wasn't a virgin. Check.
Your city's about the far side of me.
Sorry. I just. Switch.
Yes.
You're facing that. You have fewer. Okay.
Um. Grab two cows.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Um, so.
She said to reserve. She wrote about. Great. Yes. Yeah. I've happened before. Tell me about. Did you tell me what we did last night? Unlike. What was the subject? Tell you. Yeah. We are ready whenever you. Ready to go. So why? Anything? Hello?
That was a thing that would happen if everybody had. Which is a real concern about that.
This is. And I'm sure. When he comes in. So I guess. So I guess a lot.
I have some materials to do. You guys leave. So before you leave, make sure you. Protect your. Monday or next week. Homework. Great.
So there's a. So. Yeah. 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 Usually, Sam, should I distribute this from the tree committee? So you guys have it?
That's it. We'll wait. Um, all right. It is a few minutes after six. We got a sort. Okay, Bonnie, that's your mic. We're gonna have to try that again. It is a few minutes after six, and it is my pleasure to call to order the Wednesday, December 6th, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. If board members could please turn on your mics, that would be great. We will dive right in. It's good to see a few extra folks in the room tonight. We always love public participation, so thank you for being here. Item number one, as always, is the information exchange. We have an update on the comprehensive plan. Has anything changed?
Nothing has changed, but next week at 5:00 prior to the public hearings, this month, we're having two planning board member, uh, two planning board meetings. We're keeping your board very busy. So next Wednesday, the December 13th at 5:00, there's the consulting firm that's gonna be working on our comp plan is going to be here to introduce themselves, and it will be sort of like a meet and greet, just an initial opportunity for the planning board to get to know them.
Great. So hopefully, hopefully, everybody in this room will be there. It'll be riveting stuff. And that will be, yeah, open to the public, but informal. Item number two, an update on Freeport Downtown Vision Plan Implementation Task Force. This task force has been on a little bit of a hiatus. I think there's some momentum building to get it back up and running, but at this time, we really don't have any update except to say, Brett, you can correct me later if I'm wrong, but I think a, the movement that I know about was just today, maybe? A selection was made for the parking consultant.
Will be soon.
Will be soon.
Yep.
Okay. So we're close on the, on selecting a consultant for an RFP that will help us determine, help us study parking downtown and determine what the right amount is for our community and to achieve our goals. So we're looking forward to that information. One more update Caroline is indicating.
You, Mary, share.
Mary has an update from a counseling last night regarding that transportation charter.
I do.
Can we put you on the spot, Mary? Is that?
Okay, okay, okay. You should have given me a heads up. Sorry. So.
We have to have you go to the podium, though.
Yes, yes, yes.
I know you know that.
Sorry, Mary. It's exciting. Something's. Yes. We, there's a transportation group. Hi, I'm Mary Davis. There's a transportation group that came out of the downtown planning that we met with the council in February and said, we wanna look at transportation and how we can meet all the goals of Park Once and get people out to our beautiful assets and all that. And for the last now, however, many months, Kathy Smith, me, the folks from Visit Freeport and Tony have been working on, what can that look like? How can that be? And so, starting in December, next weekend, we are doing a trial of a shuttle bus. Yay! On downtown. Because what we determined is, we were just talking about that, it's hard for people to get around in Freeport, sometimes because of cell service, sometimes because of there just aren't Ubers and such around. And we know that there's two areas that we need to move people in, up and down Main Street, because we wanna be able to get people from the hotels, to the stores, to the beer companies, and all the way back up and down there. And the second place that we know we need to is how to help to get out to some of our wonderful resources, like Wolf Neck and Pettingill and all those great places. So this is a trial to see, well, what will happen if we go up and down Main Street. The shuttle will run Saturday and Sunday, the four weeks in December. It is an ADA accessible, yay, bus that has a wheelchair lift in the back of it. We basically have an hour loop that goes between the British Store and goes all the way down to Goodfire, and then back again with a whole bunch of stops in between. We want people to ride it. We want you to ask people why they're riding it, because this is really a trial for us to find out. And the council last night said, yes, go forward. And they gave, there's $10,000 that they put away and let, they said they'll let us use it for other trials in the future. But this was 100% supported by the businesses in Freeport, so that's my update.
Awesome.
Could I ask a question? The parking study, is that you guys funded?
Uh, the.
The parking study that we started on.
That's Brett's update.
Brett's.
What topic?
I was just trying to figure out, are you guys paying for it?
The parking study.
The parking study. Who's?
Uh, you can call it. It's a Portland area comprehensive transportation system study on behalf of Freeport.
That's right. But Brett did get them to pay for it.
Right. So very little.
Yes. Yes, he did. Yes, he did.
Yeah, a very little amount of resources.
Right. Thank you.
Excellent. Cecilia, do you have an update on the Freeport Climate Action Plan for us? I know there have been some public workshops recently.
Yes. So we are sort of entering that final phase of the Climate Action Plan. We had two workshops. They were sort of the same, to give people the opportunity to participate, whether they could just come in the evening on the November 14th, and then we had one on a Saturday morning at the library. That was on November 18th. And during that time, we kind of just got some feedback about priority actions, on which actions the town should take so that we can meet our emissions target. So it's very informative. It was a great presentations and lots of opportunities to interact with each other. So that was great. And moving forward, I believe we're gonna be entering the drafting phase, and I'm not sure of the date of when we will have that draft available.
Excellent. Report of items reviewed by the Freeport. Oh.
I just wanted to ask whether there's gonna be a report on the core working group, because you went through the vision plan, you know, the vision.
Uh, I would say. Item number three is the whole, that's the report. There has been no report from the core, from the central core working group since our last.
Since what we're gonna discuss tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yep.
Was there anything else?
So, yeah. What the project review board has been working on? You mind summing that up for us, Cecilia?
I'm not the best expert on that, but I believe we had a shoreline stabilization that was seen November 15th, and also a subdivision that came in. And I'm sorry, don't have like, I don't, Caroline, Caroline was there. She will be the expert on this. I don't know if it was approved or is this pending?
There's two weeks.
It was, I can talk about the sidewalk. There was a great sidewalk with, with L.L. Bean where, where they unveiled some of their most recent plans, sort of high-level plans for the, the first phase, I guess, are they calling it the first phase of, of updates over at the flagship store, which include removing part of the original 1940s-era building, rebuilding, moving some entrances around. So I think all that stuff is public. It should be up on the town website if anybody's interested in viewing those plans. They're all there. It was cool. I, I went with my son on my back.
It was very well behaved.
And it was fun for me to just see the process of how the project review board works and how projects move through, so highly recommend that to anybody who's, who's interested in how these things happen.
You got all the projects. You got the sidewalk. We don't normally have plans for a sidewalk, but in this case, based upon their conceptual presentation, the board, they submitted a revision. So if you go on the town's website, to the meeting calendar for November 29th, you'll see the project review board sidewalk. Click on that. You can see the latest renderings for the L.L. Bean project, and they'll also be coming back to the board later this month.
So to the project review board?
Correct.
So could I make a comment about that project? I, I don't know if it's appropriate to do it here.
Probably come, would encourage you to come to the project review board and participate in the public process or submit rank comment.
Yep. I think that's the advice of our official, oh, you're not the interim manager.
I am just the. Boring town planner today.
Just the town planner now, yeah. Congratulations to Caroline, by the way, and, and thank you for, for your months of service, pulling double duty. I know it's been a lot, and so congratulations on that demotion.
And could we, could you also mention where that subdivision is? The interest on housing in this group?
Yeah, it was the Segree Drive. It's off Independence Drive, right here off the Lower Main Street. There's a gray house in front that they've been doing some work to. There's a mallet-style house, I believe, behind that, and that back house is proposing to split a lot and do some road upgrades, so it's a one-lot amendment.
Okay. All right. And then, an update on the status of current and future planning board projects. I know we have a busy, a busy, well, geez, a busy week or two ahead of us here, and then we have, looking forward, lots of things that we're gonna be working on, including, you know, this one, we could potentially make, take action tonight and move forward the recommendations of the central core working group. We also have next week, hopefully buttoning up the LD 2003 updates. That's extensive, touches all kinds of parts of our ordinance, and hopefully, we can move that forward. Recommend that the council take that up and almost be in compliance with the January 1st deadline for adopting that. And then, of course, there's the comprehensive plan update that will start in earnest, really, I think with our meeting with the, with the consultants next week. That will be a little bit informal, and then there will be lots and lots of opportunities for public input and, and I'm sure subcommittee work and, and all that going forward as we update our comprehensive plan. And then there's, of course, always the cleanup and the other stuff that's, which Cecilia might be able to do a better job summarizing.
Yeah, so we're starting off with a busy start of, or end of the year, moving on to the next with the comprehensive plan. So next week, we will be finally, hopefully finalizing our amendments to, that we have so that we can meet the state's LD 2003 requirements. And those are requirements based on housing and housing production that we've been discussing almost for extensively this year. And in the middle of doing that, to, we had to amend basically our zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and the shoreline, so the shoreline zoning ordinance. For the shoreline, it's mostly unsubstantial. We just wanna make sure that the definitions match. With the subdivision ordinance, several, several meetings ago earlier this year, we discussed also incorporating some of the state standards and doing some cleanup. So when that comes back, you're gonna see a lot of cleanup. And with the zoning ordinance, there'll be some little bit of cleanup here and there and things that we picked up that are mostly unsubstantial. So I have the binders here, so for you to take home and be pretty busy this weekend, maybe taking a look at it.
Plenty of reading and refreshing for us, so. Item number two, unless, does anybody else have information to exchange? Share.
Jay Yolmas, I just wanted to make a comment regarding the parking study. I've been involved in the business in town for a long time, and there's been a lot of, there've been many studies over the years, and some of the studies, I feel like have been done, you know, on like Tuesday evening at 2:00 in the morning in February during a snowstorm, and, and I don't feel like that will represent what we really need. I think it's really, really important, and I've said this at meetings in the past, especially during the parking wars of 2016, when it came before the town, that peak parking needs, the times for peak parking needs are incredibly important, and I believe that's what the most professional landlords and the most professional tenants would, would wanna understand, as well as having the, the study comprehensively taken from, you know, July through December during those peak times. And I just wanted to say that publicly, and for the record, it's really, really critical that that's noted, because we're here during these peak times, and we see people, you know, parking all over the place, and there, the peaks are higher than, sorry, the, the difference, the, the time between the peaks and the valleys is longer than it used to be, so there's a lot, it appears that there's not a need for the parking, but I would just caution people not to assume that because, because there are a lot of empty parking spaces more days than they think that they're not needed. That, that's all I want people to really, really take into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks. Item number two, unless there's anybody else. Great. Item number two is a review of the minutes from the November 1st, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. I left my copy at home, of course, in my dash out the door, but I did have one note at the end, but I would be happy to let, if anybody has any notes on the, on the minutes from the last meeting? No? I, my only sort of thought on going through them is that it, it sort of makes it seem like we had all this discussion, there was some, we wanted to sort of address some buffering issues and, and sort of think in more depth about a couple of things, and then all of a sudden, we voted to, to move it forward without considering those things. And I just wanna at least say here for the record that I think we did consider, you know, some, some of those, or take, we, we took some of those things into account before moving forward, and I think, you know, those of us who voted, I know we had at least one, we had one nay vote on that, but those of us who voted to, to move that recommendation forward for changing the height requirements for, for ground-mounted solar, did so, and or at least I, I think I'm speaking for myself, but I think maybe others, too, sort of weighed the considerations of promoting solar development and understanding how that advances certain causes in town with the potential negatives of the, you know, the unsightliness of some of these, and we kind of, in general, came down on the side of, of wanting to move forward solar development in town and, and recognizing that as a, as a social good. So I just wanna kind of put that out there, that I think we did pay some attention to that, and it, you know, it wasn't just, you know, all of a sudden, we all, you know, bent over, so. But other, I, I'm not gonna like hold up the minute, approving the minutes based on that. I just wanted to put that out there. Does that make sense?
Very fair statement, I think.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion.
Great. And a second?
Yes.
From Mr. Ruda? We are all, do we have no, so we don't have to do a roll call? Great. All in favor?
Right.
Excellent. Item number three is a public, or will be a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 22, the Town of Freeport Design Review Ordinance. We will be discussing proposed text and map amendments to Chapter 22, the Town of Freeport Design Review Ordinance. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to clarify definitions, including adding new definitions for previously undefined terms, clarifying review standards, changing some thresholds for when review is required and what type of review is required, adding exemptions for certain projects that will no longer require a design review certificate, changing thresholds for projects that will require, will qualify, rather, for administrative approvals, clarifying submission requirements, changing the appeals process, eliminating, eliminating the color overlay district, and modifying the design review district boundaries and the associated maps. All of these proposals are coming out of the work of the Central Core Working Group, which we will learn more about in just a moment. So we're gonna start, Caroline's gonna start us off. She's put together a PowerPoint presentation to kind of walk us through some of the history of these recommendations and explain some of the context for them to hopefully bring everybody up to speed. I know many of you have been following along very closely with this process. We're also lucky to have many of the members of the Central Core Working Group in the audience tonight, so thanks to those of you who have been part of this process for a long time, for coming back out tonight, and hopefully, we can move it forward to the council in some form tonight and keep this, in my view, important process moving. So Caroline, you all set to begin?
There you go. Are you starting with that? Or use the?
Oh, yeah. That's right. So I'm gonna start. By introducing the Central Core Working Group. So this group came out of some recommendations from the Housing Committee. There's a whole kind of timeline of history that we will go into in a couple of minutes, but for now, I just wanna sort of identify the members of the Central Core Working Group and just say that, you know, all the names are up there. We don't have to go through and call out each person, but I think in general, everybody up there has worn multiple hats in the group. You know, we have, for example, Councilor Egan, John Egan, it was also a member of the Housing Committee. You know, Dan Pilch, another town councillor, also is a big part of the vision, the downtown vision implementation task force. We have, you know, Linda Berger is not only represents the Social and Racial Equity Committee, but also is a member of the PRB. We have Guy Blanchard is a, you know, former member of the PRB in addition to being involved in the Freeport Historical Society. I live in the Design Review District and all of these various overlapping districts in addition to my role here, so a lot of us, a lot of us brought multiple perspectives. And I also wanna say, I think that the group brought a wide range of perspectives to the table. We're certainly not all pushing in the same direction, and I think that the recommendations that came out of this group reflected a lot of compromise, a lot of thought, and I think we, we really wanted to move forward something that was measured and took into account a lot of viewpoints. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm proud of what came out of that group, and I think we all, you know, we all left some of our most important things on the table, maybe, but we, we moved the recommendations forward in the spirit of, of progress and achieving some goals. So, so that's the, the Central Core Working Group. One other thing, I guess, related to that last point, is I think the, the, at the end of, as we were buttoning up our recommendations, the, the metric we used to consider whether we would advance a particular recommendation was, is it better than what we have right now? Is this change to the Design Review Ordinance better than the current Design Review Ordinance? We were not shooting for perfection at all. We understood that this was a patch fix. We're trying to make certain things better. We're trying to address some low-hanging fruit, but we are not solving, quote unquote, solving the Design Review Ordinance, and we recognize that it is still, in many ways, a challenging document, and there's a lot of work to be done to streamline the permitting process downtown and to listen to voices downtown and put together a document, hopefully over the next months, maybe year, that does a better job of clarifying what the town is looking for in its downtown district. So I just want you all and anybody else who ever watches this to know that, you know, nobody who put these recommendations together thinks this is perfect, but we think it is a step in the right direction, and that is why we are.
So next week, we will be finally, hopefully finalizing our amendments to that we have so that we can meet the state's LD 2003 requirements. And those are requirements based on housing and housing production that we've been discussing almost extensively this year. And in the middle of doing that, we had to amend basically our zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and the shore land. So the shore land zoning ordinance. For the shore land, it's mostly unsubstantial. We just want to make sure that the definitions match. With the subdivision ordinance, several, several meetings ago earlier this year, we discussed also incorporating some of the state standards and doing some cleanup. So when that comes back, you're going to see a lot of cleanup. And with the zoning ordinance, there'll be some little bit of cleanup here and there and things that we picked up that are mostly unsubstantial. So I have the binders here, so for you to take home and be pretty busy this weekend, maybe taking a look at it.
Plenty of reading and refreshing for us. So item number two, unless, does anybody else have information to exchange? Sure.
Jay Yolmas, I just wanted to make a comment regarding the parking study. I've been involved in the business in town for a long time, and there's been a lot of, there've been many studies over the years. And some of the studies, I feel like have been done, you know, on like Tuesday evening at 2:00 in the morning in February during a snowstorm. And I don't feel like that will represent what we really need. I think it's really, really important, and I've said this at meetings in the past, especially during the parking wars of 2016, when it came before the town, that peak parking needs, the times for peak parking needs are incredibly important, and I believe that's what the most professional landlords and the most professional tenants would want to understand, as well as having the study comprehensively taken from, you know, July through December during those peak times. And I just wanted to say that publicly, and for the record, it's really, really critical that that's noted because we're here during these peak times and we see people, you know, parking all over the place. And the peaks are higher than, sorry, the difference, the time between the peaks and the valleys is longer than it used to be. So there's a lot, it appears that there's not a need for the parking, but I would just caution people not to assume that because there are a lot of empty parking spaces more days than they think that they're not needed. That's all I want people to really, really take into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks. Item number two, unless there's anybody else. Great. Item number two is a review of the minutes from the November 1st, 2023 Planning Board meeting. I left my copy at home, of course, in my dash out the door. But I did have one note at the end, but I would be happy to let, if anybody has any notes on the minutes from the last meeting? No? I, my only sort of thought on going through them is that it sort of makes it seem like we had all this discussion, there was some, we wanted to sort of address some buffering issues and sort of think in more depth about a couple of things, and then all of a sudden we voted to move it forward without considering those things. And I just want to at least say here for the record that I think we did consider, you know, some of those, we took some of those things into account before moving forward. And I think, you know, those of us who voted, I know we had at least one, we had one nay vote on that, but those of us who voted to move that recommendation forward for changing the height requirements for ground mounted solar did so, or at least I, I think I'm speaking for myself, but I think maybe others too, sort of weighed the considerations of promoting solar development and understanding how that advances certain causes in town with the potential negatives of the, you know, the unsightliness of some of these. And we kind of, in general, came down on the side of wanting to move forward solar development in town and recognizing that as a social good. So I just want to kind of put that out there that I think we did pay some attention to that, and it, you know, it wasn't just, you know, all of a sudden we all bent over. So, but I'm not going to like hold up the minute, approving the minutes based on that. I just wanted to put that out there. Does that make sense?
Very fair statement, I think.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion.
Great. And a second?
Yes.
From Mr. Ruda, we are all, do we have no, so we don't have to do a roll call? Great, all in favor?
Right.
Excellent. Item number three is a public, or will be a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 22, the Town of Freeport Design Review Ordinance. We will be discussing proposed text and map amendments to Chapter 22, the Town of Freeport Design Review Ordinance. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to clarify definitions, including adding new definitions for previously undefined terms, clarifying review standards, changing some thresholds for when review is required and what type of review is required, adding exemptions for certain projects that will no longer require a design review certificate, changing thresholds for projects that will require, will qualify, rather, for administrative approvals, clarifying submission requirements, changing the appeals process, eliminating the color overlay district, and modifying the design review district boundaries and the associated maps. All of these proposals are coming out of the work of the Central Core Working Group, which we will learn more about in just a moment. So we're going to start, Caroline's going to start us off. She's put together a PowerPoint presentation to kind of walk us through some of the history of these recommendations and explain some of the context for them to hopefully bring everybody up to speed. I know many of you have been following along very closely with this process. We're also lucky to have many of the members of the Central Core Working Group in the audience tonight. So thanks to those of you who have been part of this process for a long time for coming back out tonight. And hopefully we can move it forward to the council in some form tonight and keep this, in my view, important process moving. So Caroline, are you all set to begin?
There you go. Are you starting with that? Or use the bar?
Oh yeah, that's right. So I'm going to start by introducing the Central Core Working Group. So this group came out of some recommendations from the Housing Committee. There's a whole kind of timeline of history that we will go into in a couple of minutes, but for now, I just want to sort of identify the members of the Central Core Working Group and just say that, you know, the names are up there. We don't have to go through and call out each person, but I think in general, everybody up there has worn multiple hats in the group. You know, we have, for example, Councilor Egan, John Egan, was also a member of the Housing Committee. You know, Dan Pilch, another town councillor, also is a big part of the vision, the Downtown Vision Implementation Task Force. We have, you know, Linda Berger is not only represents the Social and Racial Equity Committee, but also is a member of the PRB. We have Guy Blanchard is a, you know, former member of the PRB in addition to being involved in the Freeport Historical Society. I live in the Design Review District and all of these various overlapping districts in addition to my role here. So a lot of us, a lot of us brought multiple perspectives. And I also want to say, I think that the group brought a wide range of perspectives to the table. We're certainly not all pushing in the same direction. And I think that the recommendations that came out of this group reflected a lot of compromise, a lot of thought, and I think we really wanted to move forward something that was measured and took into account a lot of viewpoints. So I think, you know, I'm proud of what came out of that group, and I think we all, you know, we all left some of our most important things on the table maybe, but we moved the recommendations forward in the spirit of progress and achieving some goals. So, so that's the Central Core Working Group. One other thing, I guess, related to that last point is I think the, at the end of, as we were buttoning up our recommendations, the metric we used to consider whether we would advance a particular recommendation was, is it better than what we have right now? Is this change to the Design Review Ordinance better than the current Design Review Ordinance? We were not shooting for perfection at all. We understood that this was a patch fix. We're trying to make certain things better. We're trying to address some low hanging fruit, but we are not solving, quote unquote, solving the Design Review Ordinance. And we recognize that it is still in many ways a challenging document, and there's a lot of work to be done to streamline the permitting process downtown and to listen to voices downtown and put together a document, hopefully over the next months, maybe year, that does a better job of clarifying what the town is looking for in its downtown district. So I just want you all and anybody else who ever watches this to know that, you know, nobody who put these recommendations together thinks this is perfect, but we think it is a step in the right direction, and that is why we are moving the recommendation forward. Not because we think it's perfection, but it's better than it was. So, yeah, that's the, that was the guiding ethos of the Central Core Working Group at the end of the weeks we spent together. And we did meet every week for, what, probably five or six weeks at least. So it was a, it was a chunk there. We've had a few weeks off now, but it was a good amount of work that went into it. So anyway, not all the slides will take that long, I promise.
All right. So we'll get started with the Design Review Ordinance. If you can't hear me, just let me know, I'll try to be a little bit louder. So we have a current Design Review Ordinance that was originally established in 1983. The specific intent of the ordinance is here, but it was to encourage the continued use of existing historically or architecturally important buildings and those which contribute to the character of our districts, which we'll get into in a minute, and to discourage their demolition and removal, to prevent inappropriate alterations to buildings of historic value, to assure that new buildings are designed and built in a manner that's compatible with the character in the districts in terms of scale and visual effect, and to ensure that changes to contemporary buildings and new construction don't take away from the adjacent historic buildings. So like I said, in 1983, we got district, or we had one district. The district pretty much goes from Kendall Lane down to Freeport Crossing where Shaw's is and the Concord Burke condos. The original district was amended here and there over time with like a parcel or two, like the Concord Burke condos in the beginning of time weren't into it, and they added it in, and there was another house on East Street. But overall, in the beginning, it remained relatively the same. And District 1, it was predominantly buildings which were constructed before 1930. It includes one of our Freeports, two federal historic districts, the Main Street Historic District. And there's many historic buildings representing a variety of architectural styles and other buildings that contribute to the historic settings. And back in 1983, we had some contemporary buildings in there. In 2007, we did some downtown, I'll say, just out of what we now talk about downtown, we did some mixed use zoning changes, created some new zoning, some new overlays, and we actually expanded Design Review. We added a second Design Review District. This area is kind of down near Bow Street Market and South Street. It's predominantly residential with a few businesses, and it's kind of tucked in between the Main Street Historic District, which is around Starbucks in the Bartel Library, most recently known as MAFKA, and the Harrisika Historic District, which encompasses a lot of South Freeport or the water side of Freeport and probably contains hundreds of parcels. Andy could probably give me a better, more accurate number. And so just to see a map of what those districts looks like, yes, these are the maps we have on file, minus a parcel here. So again, this is the original district, starts at Kendall Lane on the north Main Street side. It went off of Main Street or US Route 1, about 300 feet in either direction, went all the way down to about Shaw's, Freeport Crossing, and down on Lower Main Street, Route 1 South before you get to the intersection, actually went out 600 feet from Main Street. Design Review District 2, again, this is that newer district, kind of Bow-South Street. It's kind of tucked in between those two historic districts, was much smaller, and this just shows you the location there. And then I think also just after the 2000s, I can't remember the exact year, we had a building painted a vibrant color in downtown Freeport. And so there was a lot of community thought on that, and we developed a color overlay district. So looking at this unofficial map in front of you, if you see that magenta line in the middle, that really goes again from Kendall Lane, really along that Main Street corridor down to Freeport Crossing, anything within those purple lines, we regulate the color. So what does that mean? Well, back in the day, 2008 is when we got this, some manufacturers, not all, had historic paint color palettes. And so if you were going to change the color of your building in Design Review in that overlay district, you could use a color from any paint manufacturer's historic color palette by Wright, and you wouldn't need approval. If you wanted to use a color that was not on historic palette, you'd have to come in and get approval. We have had a couple of people that have come in and gotten approval. My opinion is they've been pretty close to historic colors, but, you know, off a little bit. As years have gone by, there are a lot more options, there's a lot more historic color palettes, pretty much most major paint manufacturers have them, and there are a lot more colors. So although we regulate the color, one thing to note here is we don't regulate how you use the color. You can do patterns, you can do stripes, you can do a couple of colors. We just regulate the color.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
Interesting fact. And interestingly, we don't regulate colors on signage in the same way. So you might notice when you go through downtown, there's some signage that doesn't look so historic, because although color is a standard, it's regulated in a different way when they come in. So that's a snapshot of two Design Review Districts and the color overlay. So we've had some other related things happening, which might be a little more interesting than just land use. So pre-pandemic, the Project Review Board and Planning Board had actually been talking about updating the Design Review Ordinance. A lot of other people weren't interested, but they were really interested. But then we hit a pandemic, and things slowed down and shifted course, and we shut down. But before the pandemic hit, the Town of Freeport had a little bit of money, so the Project Review Board put out a request for proposal, and they actually had an architectural historian survey the Class A and B buildings, which we'll get into in a few minutes, in Design Review District 1. So it was about 120 properties that hadn't been mostly inventoried since the early 80s. And the historian went around, filled out a sheet, and determined which ones still had some architectural and historical significance and which ones were like just too far altered and too far gone. So of the 120, only 13 from 1983 to 2019 were determined to no longer be contributing. We didn't do Design Review District 2 because that was a lot more recent, back in the mid 2000s. So we had that information. We thought that it would give a good baseline. It would be good at such time we wanted to look at boundaries and if we wanted to make some changes to the ordinance.
Can I just ask one quick question there?
Sure.
So this map here reflects that work there?
Um.
What's marked A and B on here?
No, the building class, great question. The building classes did not change. When we did that study, which you don't see here, the intent was that when we updated the ordinance, instead of going to this three category ABC, buildings would either be contributing or not contributing. You don't see that here, so I don't want to confuse you, but that was the intent. So we didn't change building classes, but we do use this as a good resource when people...
And were some of those that were considered contributing marked as C on here?
We did not inventory the C. We did not have the funding.
Only A and B. So we're only talking about As and Bs?
Only As and Bs.
And most of those that you see here were, continue to be contributing?
Yes. Now, we sometimes, in the view of the board and staff, we're not trained historians, but sometimes a building comes in and it will say C, and I'll be like, hmm, that looks pretty old and pretty important. But we, most of the Cs are Cs because they're newer. Like if a building gets ripped down and a new one goes up, you're automatically C. We didn't have the funding to do the C.
Okay.
But really good questions. In 2022, a lot of us in this room are familiar, we completed a downtown vision plan, so we identified goals and guiding principles, and we got a robust list of goals and implementation strategies, many of which we're working on. Some of the ones that came up in the visioning that kind of tie into what we're talking to about tonight, we're supporting variety uses of uses in our downtown with a recognition of the importance of encouraging residential uses, having more clear and predictable regulations, and streamlining our review process for both residential and commercial projects that require some level of municipal review. And then kind of where we started the night, Sam mentioned that late summer, we had, the Freeport Town Council hosted a housing workshop. And so this workshop was really brought to life based upon some recommendations that the Freeport Housing Task Force had brought forward. And one of those recommendations was a short term fix to make an emergency repair to the Design Review Ordinance to exclude new residential and residential mixed use construction from Design Review. And our community had a lot of thoughts on that, so that's why we're here tonight. The other thing, just to kind of be aware of, to file in the back of your brain, is we have a lot of different rules and regulations in Freeport. And so though we're talking to Design Review, on the right-hand side, you see this mess. You're like, Caroline, what's that pretty mess of colors? So that mess is intended to look like a mess, because it is. That actually shows you some overlapping districts. So two things to be aware of that come into play when we talk about Design Review, and some of the recommendations we'll walk you through later, is, so we have that central corridor, you can see the solid blue and the solid pink, those are Design Review 1 and 2. You see the color overlay down the middle, and then you see these two areas that are kind of hatched. One on the north side kind of goes around what we know as the commercial core for the most part, not right in the center of downtown. And that's the Freeport Village Overlay District. That came into play back in the mid 2000s when we extended Design Review District 2. We added some mixed uses outside of the Main Street area. And the other thing that comes into play, which we'll really talk a little bit more about tonight, is on the bottom of that drawing, you kind of see this triangular white hatch mark, and that is the Commercial 3 zoning district. And our commercial districts, 1, 3, and 4, which is Route 1 South, Lower Main Street, and just over the Desert Road Overpass, we actually have some design standards and performance standards down there. They're not as intense as Design Review, but we still have some standards about breaking up building facades, looking at signage color, buffers, some of those design standards that you talk about in a different level with Design Review. So just file that in the back of your brain. So a lot of information in a little bit of time. So just to review our current Design Review Ordinance, we have two districts, District 1 and District 2, and the Color Overlay District. As Mitch kind of brought up, each building in the district has an A, B, or C ranking based upon its determined architectural and historical significance. If you're A and B, you're the most important buildings in downtown Freeport. We highly value for those two things. C, less important, in a lot of cases, it's a newer structure. So if you had an A building and you had the approvals to take it down, per the current ordinance, you are automatically get demoted to a Class C property, which comes into play with some of the standards. Pretty much the way Design Review is written is almost any exterior building, inner site modification requires review and approval of a Design Review Certificate from the Project Review Board. We've been interpreting that over the years to be if it's visible from any public right-of-way. And there's very little that staff can approve. Staff can approve signage changes and outdoor seating. So if you live in Design Review and you want to change your door on the weekend, or you want to replace your wood window with vinyl, you can't. You need to apply to come to the Project Review Board once a month. It's anything. As noted on the original slot of the intent, we have tried to be sensitive to removing historic buildings, the A and B buildings. It's not a historic preservation ordinance. It does not save a building, but if you want to rip a building down, or tear it down, or tear down a portion of it, we want to be sensitive to that. So we have this four-month notice period. You put some ads in the paper, you come to the board, you try to find somebody to save the building. And if you do all that, at the end of four months, there's no takers, the board has to grant your approval to take the building down. That being said, that four months, it's something the Central Core Working Group did talk about, but it's not in front of you tonight. The four months, we have saved some buildings. They've got relocated to other places in town. And in cases where we can't save the building, a lot of times, it's given the Freeport Historical Society the opportunity to go into these structures and take photos or do drawings and document them as part of Freeport's history. So for anyone that wants to come get approval of a Design Review Certificate, there's 10 guidelines, which we'll get into a little bit tonight. And these are the 10 standards that the boards need to consider with regards to changes. And it really has to do with the visual compatibility of the proposal with buildings, squares, places, and how they specifically relate to the A and B buildings. It doesn't say today where those A and B buildings are, because they're all throughout the district, District 1 and District 2. We get a lot of feedback that there's vague submission requirements here. There's, it really doesn't say what you need to submit. It's kind of broad, like the board can ask you for whatever they want, basically. And appeals of a board decision go to the Board of Appeals and then to Superior Court. Any questions on that crash course in Design Review? All right, Sam, you're up.
All right. So, oh boy. That is far away from my eyes. So I'm going to just, I think, quickly walk through the proposed changes, and I might have to have Caroline's help reading those bullet points because I actually cannot see that far.
Really bad glare, I'm sorry.
But starting with the definition section, we have added a couple of definitions and clarified some terms that are, were not clear. And again, we recognize that these definitions may not be perfect, but they are, we think, significant. And I, when I say we, obviously I mean the Central Core Working Group. So the Central Core Working Group felt that these were improvements. I think the biggest one is the addition of the nearby building definition. So previously, in the design guidelines, the, each of those 10 sections made reference to neighborhood buildings, or nearby buildings, or close by buildings. I mean, it used different language. Every, each one was a little bit different, and at no point was it clear what counted as the neighborhood, or what counted as nearby. And so one of the goals that the Central Core Working Group identified fairly early on is let's put, what we, I think Brett came up with the term, a radius of compatibility. So how, what do we care about in terms of other buildings? Like how close is close enough that they should be counted and considered as nearby buildings? So we added this definition. We came up with a definite, with the metric, the objective standard, within 500 feet of a project seeking a Design Review Certificate as measured from the center of a project's primary building facade along the center line of the paved portion of any public rights of way. So really what this is doing is trying to say, okay, if the project is located in a particular parcel within the Design Review District, it should consider other buildings within 500 feet as measured in that particular way, and not buildings that are a mile away on the other side of town out of view, but buildings that are within, within that radius. So Caroline helpfully put up this little graphic here that shows what that 500 feet measured in the way that we have defined it might look like. So Caroline, can you, can you use the pointer maybe, or physically point at it?
Yeah.
So this is Town Hall that we're using.
Yeah, this is Town Hall. Here, we're using this as the pretend proposed building. This is the Main Street side, and this is the Grove Street side. And the green dots recommend the approximate center of each of those primary facades that face the road. And the lovely pink lines show measurements approximately 500 feet in all directions via road. So if someone was proposing something here at Town Hall, and you were looking for what's visually compatible, you'd go part of the way down Holbrook Street, what you could see. You'd actually go up just to the corner of Mill Hill, just where the Met Cafe passed Levi's up in that area, back down to Depot Street a little bit in either directions, like FCS and the parking lots, and you'd go just past the West Street intersection.
So the 500-foot distance was something that we talked a fair bit about, and we went into, I guess I went into Google Earth at least one night, and kind of played around and figured out what 500 feet looks like in town. And it turns out that a lot of our block lengths are about 500 feet. So the distance from that intersection that Caroline just pointed out by the Met and Levi's, running downhill to the corner of the movie theater, is about 500 feet. Then from that corner to the cooking store, or Orvis is on that corner, that's also about 500 feet. And then back up to Main Street, that's about 500 feet. LL Bean, the Maine and Bow intersection down to like Sherman's, also roughly 500 feet. So there's a lot of, the 500-foot distance seemed to make sense with the way that town is laid out. Of course, there's no one number that's going to capture perfectly every situation, but we felt like that was a really good starting point and a good way to clarify for the Project Review Board and for applicants which buildings they should be looking at in terms of inspiration or compatibility. So we'll talk, we'll continue to talk about that definition as we get into some of the other language, but that is one of the big, that's one of the big changes. But that is one of the big, that's one of the big changes. So, right out of the gate. In order to make that definition work, we added also a definition of primary facade. And a primary facade can be any one or more exterior facades, which are visible from a public right-of-way. Again, that was a term that was used in the Design Review ordinance, but it wasn't defined. So we wanted to put a definition to it. The definition of visually compatible has been updated. The definition before really didn't define anything at all. It didn't, honestly, didn't make very much sense, at least to me. So we tried to use some architecturally accepted terms and talk about, you know, just relate this definition to the criteria that the Project Review Board considers when considering projects. So height, proportion of the buildings, primary facades, et cetera. So, "compatible projects are visually and architecturally harmonious with the predominant pattern, if one exists, of nearby buildings in the district." So that's kind of the meat of that definition. I think those were the, kind of the highlights of the definition section. What's the?
So elimination of the color overlay district?
Yep. So the color overlay district was this kind of funny little district that exists only within the Design Review district. So it doesn't have its own sort of section or its own part of the ordinance that creates it. It's all within the Design Review ordinance. The Central Core Working Group felt that, for the reasons that Caroline kind of alluded to, the fact that there are so many colors available on historical color palettes, the fact that we didn't regulate color in other ways, it felt to us that it was kind of an arbitrary distinction and an extra boundary that had different, or an extra district, an extra overlay that had different boundaries than all the other ones. It really just added a level of confusion. And we didn't feel like the service it was providing was really worth that extra confusion in town. I think in the future, if there are other ways that we want to regulate color, maybe that's a possibility. But at this point, it just seemed like we really needed to simplify and recognize that the ordinance is not doing really what it was intended to do at all, anyway.
You're going to do a flyby, and then we're going to go through it slowly? Is that how we're going to?
Yeah, I'm doing, I think, I'm trying to walk the public as well as you guys. I mean, I know we've been through this as a board, but also, you know, kind of bring everybody up to speed. Hopefully, trying to move relatively quickly. I know there's a lot of information here. I mean, you can tell me to talk slower, too. I know sometimes I get carried away. But, and then, yeah, there'll be a chance.
Because I have a comment on there, but we can, if we're going to go back through it.
Yeah, there'll be a chance for the board to talk about it, and then we'll hear from the public as well. So, so, yeah. Again, Central Core Working Group recommending removing the references to the regulation of color, including eliminating the color overlay district. The next section, I believe, is clarifying and expanding the thresholds for review. One of the things we wanted to do was allow for certain small projects to be undertaken without needing to go before the Project Review Board. So there are two levels for projects of that type. There is the sort of permit by rule, or exempt from a Design Review permit altogether. Projects that might fall into that category, like adding solar panels to your roof, as long as they're in plain with the roof. I think, now I'm forgetting which ones.
Replacement, identical replacement.
Yep, replacement deckboards, handrails, balusters. You guys can go through the list. So those would be exempt. I'm kind of going backwards here, starting with the ones that are exempt. And then there are some projects that we felt would be appropriate for administrative review, so a slightly higher level, to have Caroline as the town planner, or any future, well, we hope you're here forever, but any future town planner sign off on replacement doors of identical size and style, replacement windows of, you know, that meet certain criteria of, you know, keeping existing light patterns and having certain standards for simulated divided lights that are not just grills between the glass, but actual physical mountain bars on the inside and outside. So we tried to be specific and clear with the levels and add, hopefully, some relief for property owners in this district to be able to do some projects without having to go before the Project Review Board and figure out what the Project Review Board needs for submission requirements and go through that whole process. I've done it twice, it's super fun. But hopefully, it'll be a little bit easier for certain projects in the future. So we also cleaned up the existing definitions for, or not definitions, but the existing projects that need to go before the Project Review Board. So the main change here is we struck a couple of items that the old 6 and 7 have been stricken from this proposed draft. And basically, what that change is proposing is saying that any material change needs a design certificate only if it's visible from the public right-of-way. So this is the way Caroline tells me that this has been enforced. So I think the real-world example is if I wanted to add a window to the backside of my barn, I could do that without a Design Review permit. It's not visible from any public right-of-way. I don't need a Design Review permit to do that under these new proposed rules. Whereas today, technically speaking, I would need a Design Review permit. I live in a B building. So it would be, again, by, going by the letter of the existing ordinance, it would technically be required for me to go before the board and say, hey, I'm going to put this window in that nobody will ever see, except for my dog in the backyard. But, so we're just clarifying that, that we really care about things that are visible from a public right-of-way within the district. So that's kind of the thresholds section, and clarifying what needs a project, a Design Review certificate. We change, or we're proposing changing the rules, the voting rules, I guess, of the Project Review Board. The existing rules are quite complicated. And we are suggesting just changing the rules to be that a motion made by Project Review Board, by the Project Review Board passes with a majority vote of the board, of the president and voting board members, rather than this sort of convoluted process that existed previously. We think this is more in line with all the other boards in town, and it just makes things a lot simpler, trying to figure out how motions are made and how they pass. So that's a relatively minor change, but do want to call it out here. Section 5, which is Page 6, I apologize for the, I should have been calling that out all along. We are on Page 6 of the draft now. At the bottom, there is, Section 7 is really the submission requirements section. Right, Caroline? So we're clarifying kind of the process of applying for and receiving a Design Review permit. So that one is, I think, Caroline did most of the heavy lifting on that.
That's really mirrored out of the base requirements out of site plan, which people are really submitting anyways.
Yep.
It's more the mental checklist, we go through them.
Right. Yep. And so it just helps to bring it into the Design Review ordinance for applicants to know what is required of them to go before the Project Review Board. Section 8, the Design Guidelines, is where I think we see that nearby, the definition of nearby buildings come back. So we've used that definition throughout. We've done a lot of language cleanup and tried to just make the Design Guidelines read better and read clearer and be more consistent throughout. The thing to pay attention to here is really in numbers 1 and 2, or I guess, starting right up top, we say, when determining visual compatibility, wait, sorry, let me go back. We say, we have stricken the requirement for A and B buildings to be considered for all of these design criteria, so that we can then be selective about when all nearby buildings should be considered, including C buildings, and when we should look just to nearby A and B buildings. So for scale and height, which are numbers 1 and 2 under the Design Guidelines for all buildings, we want to look to all nearby buildings. So the example here is if you, if somebody were proposing a project that is near a small, single-family home and an existing, very large building, that both of those buildings should be able to be used for the scale and for the height. And we do not want to restrict future projects to considering just the height of a very small building that happens to be close by, when there might also be other existing buildings in the neighborhood that are much larger. So for those two criteria, scale and height, we want to be able, we want future projects to be able to consider all existing nearby buildings. For everything else, for proportion, for rhythm of solids and voids, proportion of openings, roof shapes, relationship of facade materials, et cetera, we think that A and B buildings should still have the priority. So we're looking to nearby A and B buildings when determining the visual compatibility of the, you know, the proposed project with existing buildings. So it's hard to sort of wrap that up concisely and make it make sense talking about it, but hopefully, that makes sense to the board and to the public. Happy to answer more questions about that later. The, let's see. Most of the other stuff in that section, I think, is just cleanup. That's really the big, the big change. And then we just tried to be clear about, you know, clearer about facade materials and not, you know, we didn't get too far into the weeds. We did think about going way into the weeds on facade materials and calling out which materials would be appropriate in the district and which wouldn't. We decided, in the effort to move things along and not delay further progress on this process later, we wanted to just move forward a simplified, a simplified version of this and leave those really in-the-weeds discussions for the future, when we can really figure out what the town wants to see in the downtown district in terms of what materials are appropriate, what types of windows, what shapes of buildings are appropriate. That's the next step after we're done with this. The big change here in Section 9 is a recommendation to change the appeals process. So essentially, the way, the way it reads today is that any decision of the Project Review Board can be appealed to the Board of Appeals in town. I think, Caroline, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the only volunteer board decision that can be appealed to another volunteer. No?
No. But of the ones that overlap with this, site plan goes directly to court, subdivision gets appealed to Board of Appeals, and Design Review gets appealed to Board of Appeals.
Sorry, I forgot about.
We have another 40 ordinances that go all over the place.
So the goal is to streamline the appeals process so that it is consistent across, you know, so that we have clarity that decisions of volunteer boards and appeals go to one place throughout our ordinances. We're seeking to try to streamline and clarify that appeals process. This change would make it so that staff decisions, so Caroline, in this case, decisions that Caroline makes could be appealed to the Board of Appeals. So if I bring, you know, a cut sheet of a door that I think is appropriate to put on my house to Caroline, and she says, no, I don't like that, and I say, I think you've made the wrong decision, I could appeal that to the Board of Appeals, and they would hear that case. If I take my project, assuming this all happens, it wouldn't be just a door, but it would be a bigger project. If I take my project to the Project Review Board and they deny my project, I would, under this proposal, I would be taking my appeal. If I wanted to appeal their decision, I would be taking it straight to Superior Court, not to the Board of Appeals.
Sam, what page are you on? I'm kind of getting.
I'm under Section 9. So Section 9, it said, Section 9 is the very bottom of Page 10.
Page 11 and 12.
Yep. Yeah, the meat of it is on Page 11.
Well, the deletion is 12, is 11 and 12.
So again, potentially a large change, but I think it's fair to say one that was supported with maybe a couple of dissensions, supported by the Central Core Working Group, and also supported by the attorneys and town staff. Maybe not all town staff, but the ones that we heard from. That really is, that's it. As far as text goes, there's a change to the fees section, where we just take the fees right out of this ordinance and put them in the municipal fee schedule where they belong, and it's much easier to change them there, rather than going back and changing the whole ordinance just to update the fees. So then, as Mitch said, the other big change is the map amendment, proposed map amendment. So after much discussion and various versions of this, the Central Core Working Group has suggested a relatively simple, but not insubstantial, so a relatively simple adjustment to the existing map. So the, as Caroline showed on previous slides, the current Design Review district extends essentially to shaws for big landmarks that we can talk about. We are suggesting shrinking the boundary to the railroad tracks.
Yep, so I'm going to show it on this existing, and then we can go back to the other one. So if you, Main Street, Town Hall is right here. You go past Public Safety, you go up that, start to go up the railroad bridge. Anything south of the railroad bridge, under this proposal, would no longer be in Design Review.
Right. And so there are some A and B buildings. I think they are all on the west side of the street. Is that right? But we, as a working group, felt that this was a good step in simplifying the district and hopefully allowing Section 527 to be the sort of the guiding design standard down there. Of course, that can be updated in the future as well. But there is, Section 527, performance standards are in place down there. And so we thought that that was a good, you know, a good layer of regulation to have down there without layering an additional Design Review process on top of that. So we talked quite a bit about other changes to the map, you know, lopping off, or shrinking the section that goes up Mallett Drive so that it's closer to town, you know, kind of tightening some of the pockets along South Street or Bow Street. But I think at this stage, we, as a working group, felt like, starting with that simple move of the, you know, the southern border up to the railroad tracks was a really good starting point, especially given, as I said, that 527 is there. And we didn't want to leave holes where there are no standards in place. So for example, the, you know, the parking lots just below us down here on Depot Street, there are no other standards that would be in place in those districts. If we were to remove the Design Review standard, Freeport Village overlay doesn't apply because it's in the VC-1. You know, we've already talked about eliminating the color overlay. So there's really not a lot of oversight or Design Review, for lack of a better term, but in that area, without leaving the Design Review district in place. So we thought, again, in the interest of compromise and moving forward, a good proposal at this stage. We wanted to leave those areas in. We also are very wary of shrinking the district down only to grow it again at the next round of revisions to this process once we've engaged a consultant. So we really wanted to start with what we thought was a good, common-sense move. And then if, in a public process and a process with some Design Review consultants going forward, we find other ways to tighten and clarify the district, we can potentially do that later. But we would rather shrink the district further than shrink it and then start to grow it again. So I think this is a good, a really good starting point, and one that we felt pretty good about after a fair amount of discussion. So it's simple, but we took all kinds of side roads and explored all kinds of avenues along the way to getting to this simple proposal. Yeah, of course.
May I ask two clarifying questions before we go forward? The first one is, is there an updated, so, for the sake of the public, there is a plan to rewrite this entire ordinance from top to bottom. So that's very critical. So this work is being done as a stopgap until then. And so my question is, when is then? Because I think all of our decisions will have some bearing on how long is this document going to be in place until it's reconsidered.
So the plan is to see what happens tonight. And then if the, the plan is to move forward. I think one of the big conversations and big pieces here tonight that will impact the work and the cost of work is if and how the district boundaries shrink. So depending how the discussion goes tonight, you could have, still a path forward for the RFP, but it could look two different ways if we're talking about now not having to have a consultant look at all the zoning and design standards south of the railroad bridge and north. So the thought is to move forward as soon as possible in two slightly different written ways, depending on the discussion tonight and where it looks like it's headed.
And it's still, say, nine months?
I'd say probably six months. Like, the working group's gone through a lot of ideas. There's a lot of stuff that they've talked about that just was like, okay, this is good, we're not going to do it now. We know we want to look to switching to contributing, non-contributing. We know there are some areas up here that we talked about cutting, but like Sam said, if we cut them, there's no backup plan, there's no standard. So I think we have a good kind of base as to some things now that we want the consultant to look at, and the thought is that the working group could help us get that launched in a quicker way to bring something forward to you.
So the second comment I wanted to make was, these are fundamentally the recommendations of the working group, not of this planning board.
Correct. That's an important point. That's a really good point.
Thank you.
Yes. So the, yes, these recommendations are, yeah, actually, we could, we can just talk for a moment about, about process now. So these recommendations are coming from the Central Core Working Group. Originally, when the Central Core Working Group was formed, part of the reason for forming it and part of the reason for looking exclusively at the designer review district is because the designer review district is its own, its own ordinance, there was a thought that we might be able to make updates to the designer review ordinance without coming before the planning board. We have since then realized, with the help of some legal advice and through working through some of these ideas, that a lot of the recommendations could be considered zoning. Even though they exist in this designer review ordinance document, they still count as zoning, especially as map changes, would be considered zoning. And so because they are considered zoning, they need to come to the planning board. So that's why we're here, really, is that the Central Core Working Group has made these recommendations and now in order to, to, and it, it has always been very important, I think, to everybody involved in this, that there be a proper public process. So, you know, the, the original intent was never to like circumvent the public process, but as soon as we, you know, kind of realized and got the legal advice that this is zoning in a, in the technical sense, we wanted to bring it to the planning board, have a public hearing, and proceed with the normal process for zoning changes. So that means that tonight, there will be a public hearing, there is a public hearing, I'm assuming that's why a lot of you are here, and the board could vote to take action tonight to recommend this to the council. If that happens, the council would then have a meeting to discuss it, any questions they might have. Assuming they like the proposal, they could then schedule a public, their own public hearing at the next, their next meeting. So I think, I mean, it would be, what, the 19th, and then, I don't know what the date of their next meeting is.
January 2nd would be after the 19th. One else, another benefit of having it come through the planning board is you guys are, you guys are the place that we do the most about our notification or people within the district. So Cecilia has been very busy this month, leading the way to make sure the public is notified, and I think she sent over 800 notices for tonight's meeting.
Yep. Yep, and we actually.
Plenty of help.
Yes. And we made the decision to not stick strictly to the letter of the law on notifications and, but actually notify people who are within a half a mile? No, within some distance.
You have like a buffer.
Yeah, there's a buffer beyond the designer review district, so it's not only people who are actually inside it, there's actually a buffer outside of that. We sent extra notifications to make sure as many people as possible got word of this meeting tonight. And then, like I said, assuming this moves forward tonight, it would go to the council, the council will discuss it, set a public hearing, and then at the next meeting, they would hold a public hearing. So there are still, there's still another, another chance for public input to the council before this is adopted, if, obviously, assuming if, you know, if it's adopted, so.
And when it goes to the council, then we won't be sending letters, so do follow up.
Does that clarify process? Yeah. Yeah, and thank you, Mitch, that's a great point. This is not something that the planning board has spent a lot of time with, so.
Wanted to make the point that we, we are spending time with it tonight.
Right. We, you know, we got a brief tour of it, I think, at the last meeting, and then tonight is sort of the, the, the planning board's chance to discuss it and hear from the public. So that's, yeah, that's where we are. Any questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Will we discuss amongst ourselves our own comments on this document after the public hearing? That's fine with me, I'd like to hear from the public.
Great. Can I take, like, I didn't bring any water with me, and I've been talking a lot. I need to get some water, but if you guys want to, just, I just need like two minutes, I apologize. Talk amongst yourselves.
Is that the usual way that we listen first?
A lot of times you ask questions first. Doesn't matter. I think you can do it either.
800, so, oh no, it will be fine.
It's just they may have comments on our comments.
Yeah, I think if you guys have questions, you maybe can ask the, like, if you have questions to clarify, maybe you can ask those first. That might be helpful.
No, I have opinions about where this is wrong.
Yeah, but not like, you know, questions about what it means.
No, very clear.
Big oversight, it's nothing, my water, left it right on the counter.
Oh, boy.
Did I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
And a second?
A second.
A second. Great. All in favor? Excellent. The public hearing is now open. As a reminder to the public, I'm sure most of you have been here for this before, but please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, and neither the podium nor the microphone needs to be moved. They are in perfect position as they are, they do not need to be touched or moved, as tempting as that may be.
Even for short people, huh?
We have our first volunteer. Ford.
Ford Reiki, Chair of the Project Review Board. Your helpful hints on podium management will carry through to project review board meetings. I served in the meeting with, on the committee with you and Mitch and others, and just want to give you some feedback from how this has been communicated back to the project review board. We, Caroline and I reviewed our proceedings with the members of the project review board at each of our meetings, they've seen what's happened, what the output of the committee was, and if any of those individuals have any comments, I'm sure we'll hear from them tonight, but I'll tell you, no, no feedback except positive came my way. And a lot of the things which have been addressed by this, by the working group are matters which we knew for a long time had needed attention, and you did a great job as Chair, I want to add that as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I know you're all here for this, so don't be shy, please.
We have five people online, too.
Okay. Yeah, and, and for those of you on Zoom, traditionally, the planning board has done the room first and then Zoom for no particular reason, but we will stick to that tonight just because it's worked in the past.
I'm Bob Stevens, and Mr. Chairman, would you ask the town planner, it would help me if the town planner could put back the one slide that showed the 500 feet? That was quick, good. So Caroline, so any of those buildings is a nearby building, anything that's in, within that district, right?
Right, and this is Caroline estimating 500 feet, so.
I understand, but whatever it is.
Yes, yep, anything either side of the road, technically, turn the corner a little bit on West Street, but.
Okay, so none of those have to be visually visible? The project doesn't have to be visually visible from all of those buildings, correct? From any of those buildings, really?
It does not. That was in there at one point, but it got struck.
Okay, then the primary facade can be any one or more exterior facades of a building which is visible from a public right of way?
So that's thinking about a corner building.
Like Town Hall is shown in front of you.
But how do you decide which is the primary facade?
You don't. They are, there can be multiple primary facades.
Shouldn't the word just be, if the word, language was just street facing, you know, facades that face streets? I think that's what is the intent.
Well, the measurement has to be, anything within 500 feet of whatever is qualified as a primary facade.
But if you have a corner, you'll have two 500-foot points.
Right, so you'd have to be compatible with everything, all nearby buildings measured from either one of those primary facades.
I think that's the intent, whether the language is right.
And so they don't have to be visually there.
So the board, we thought, the first round of this, I think, was, the language, if I recall correctly, was clearly within sightlines of the proposed project or some, something like that, and there may have been a distance as well, but after, I think it was, I mean, it was both talking internally among the working group and then also getting some legal advice, that that was just a really hard to quantify, you know, it was like clearly visible when I'm, you know, standing on the front porch on a cloudy day, or clearly visible if I, you know, like stand on the bed of my pickup truck and sort of crane my neck around, you know, what is clearly within sightlines is just too open to interpretation. So as cumbersome as it may seem to draw lines around corners along rights of way, this was, we felt, the best way to approximate sightlines in an objective way. So that, this is, this is where we ended up.
But, so you're really saying that it has to be visually compatible with any of these buildings, or any of those buildings have to be considered for visual compatibility?
Correct.
I think that's not a very reasonable.
Well, the way it is currently, so to say, to sort of go back to the way the, the Central Core Working Group thought about this, the way it is currently, any building in the designer review district could be considered for visual compatibility.
This is very, this is, so this, this, this is one of those little betterments, but it's not very good to, in fact, have that be the standard, that it has to be compared with everything within 500 feet, even if they're not visually can be seen together.
So it does, it says the predominant pattern, if one exists, is the definition of visual compatibility. So if there's no predominant pattern.
Then it doesn't have to comply with anything?
Then it, I mean, again, the, the standards are, are subjective, they have always been subjective, and the intent here is to narrow the, the scope of focus, so there's going to be subjectivity, but it's within a smaller area, so at least we don't have people cherry picking buildings that are, you know, way across town. And that can cut in either direction, you know, I could see.
Sure. I think, and it's really hard, what you're trying to do, I, I know that for sure, I just don't think that this could be, this could be seen as unreasonable. Thank you.
Eric Smith, Executive Director of Freeport Historical Society. First of all, I just want to thank everyone who served on the Central Core Working Group. It's an enormous challenge to try to take all of the concerns that came to the sort of massive public hearing that we had at the library several months ago, from the Housing Committee, from project review, from planning board, from Town Council, and I think the work that you all have done in a very short amount of time is quite impressive. I want to thank particularly Guy Blanchard, who represented the Historical Society, as well as his own experience on the project review board. And I also think that in terms of the cleanup of the operations of the ordinance, having sat through quite a number of project review board meetings, the number of things that you have taken out of this that can be addressed by town staff, like solar panels, like lots of other things, that will allow the project review board to spend more time on really critical issues related to design review, rather than incidental material changes and things like that, I think is really helpful. I appreciate also the reduction of the size of the design review district, in part because, again, it will allow the project review board to focus on what really is the most historically sensitive areas of the downtown. It's, I appreciate the fact that there are still A and B buildings on Route 1 South, which will still have some level of protection. There are, of course, historically significant buildings throughout the town that do not lie within a designer review district and are not particularly protected since we do not have a historic preservation ordinance. But I would like to, again, encourage you to move this forward because it does continue the long stated goal within Freeport and within this designer review ordinance to protect the historic character of the downtown, as well as move forward a lot of the goals that many of us have within the downtown vision project, to bring housing back into the downtown, as well as help modify the downtown to be more appealing not only to visitors but to our own residents. Lastly, I just want to remind everyone that historic preservation is also economic development. There is a really key reason why Freeport is such a popular destination for visitors, that it is not Kittery, that it is not the mall. There is an allure that brings people to the downtown, including residents who want to live here because of the character of the downtown, and I think maintaining the core of the designer review ordinance is really key to that. Just as an example, it's been 40 years since McDonald's came to town, Town Freeport. The fact that McDonald's here is in an 1850s Italian house is still international news. Two weeks ago, that McDonald's was in the New York Post, it was in the Daily Mail, it was in the Times of London as the poshest McDonald's in the world. People come here for what this town has done over the last 40 years and more to preserve its historic character, and I think that's still an important thing for us to continue as we move into the future and into the downtown vision. Thanks.
I definitely moved here because I could see the poshest McDonald's ever from our upstairs windows. I was, you know, as soon as we walked through the house, it was like, gotta live there, yeah.
Your kid election, too, right?
That's right, yeah.
I don't know, posh.
That part of it cuts the other way, but.
I'm Mary Davis, now as President of FEDC, Freeport Economic Development Corp. And as we talked about, we, we are so appreciative that you put this together, that you included members from all of the groups, and Brett, like so many members, brought so much back to us about what you were doing on the working group, and we appreciate all the work. We know that this is hard, sticky, sticky? That's like wicked sticky, wicked sticky work. And, you know, we have a broad board, we have 12 individuals on the board, there's a developer, there's a banker, there's residents, there are, there are so many people, there are people who own businesses in Freeport, so we have a lot of different opinions, as you probably did. We talked a lot about the, all of the changes that you made, and, you know, as you know, we really support the downtown vision and we're excited about the changes that you're doing. I think overall, what we want to say is, thank you, we're so happy to see us moving forward on making some changes to the ordinance so that it gets it more in line. We embrace what's going on with the downtown vision, and like with so many people, we want it preserved because downtown is what brings people here, and guess what, keeps our taxes, keeps our personal real estate taxes in line because we have the downtown in place. So we're very supportive of that. We also want housing in Freeport because, in downtown specifically, because we know that that's a good economic driver for us, it helps our less miles walked, it helps all of the conservation things that we have in place. So we're very much endorsing what your working group came forward with on recommendations, with one small adjustment, and that's that we would love to see you continue to shrink that district so that it's along Main Street. It seems like most of the residents are very interested in conserving that on Main Street, and we agree, that's the place to do it. But as we start to think about, like on Depot Street, that's where we'd like to have housing, and as these current design things come into place, if you're building on Depot Street now, you're comparing a, a building that should be able to be three stories and be, provide affordable housing, you're comparing it to two-story wooden mallet houses and small brick houses. And again, it just makes it unpredictable for our developers to come here and uncertain, and when they're uncertain. And when they're uncertain, they don't necessarily choose us as a place to come. So, again, we're supporting what you're doing, we're so happy with these changes, just keep working on it. We know that there are some ordinances you'd have to put in place, but keep working on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Sir Bob, yeah, if you, it's not the mad rush that I expected, you know what I mean?
Sir, those 800 and something letters.
Yeah.
I would just like to support what Mary proposed. Again, thinking if there's a building down on Depot Street, and then if, again, then the 500 feet gets measured from the facade of that building, and you go 500 feet out. So that's a tough requirement, I think. Maybe you would end up with a predominant visual effect, maybe you wouldn't, I don't know, but say you do, for sure, and it may be far different than actually what's down on Depot Street, or what you might think should go there. And I think that probably, we got two issues here. We're trying to say, keep our historically significant matters, buildings and the like, but we also have a need for housing. So, you know, I think we better, looking, trying to balance those two objectives. I mean, I would see housing to be the more important of the two when you get to an area that isn't really the core of a historic district. I don't think Depot Street is, and I think that should be treated differently, so that the standards that are good and are important for our real historic district are applied where they ought to be, and not to an area that they need not be. Thanks.
So are there any other, does anybody else want to comment on stuff publicly? Yeah, because I do want to address that. I think that's a great comment.
We have Zoom as well.
Yeah, and we have Zoom as well. So I'll come back to that, because I have, I have some thoughts on that, where I, kind of where I come down personally, which I think is pretty well aligned with you.
I have some as well.
Yeah, Chalmers, please.
I have a little, a little, basic, what I'm going to say. I've got a slightly abbreviated version of that off my left. I was thinking I would be limited to three minutes, so I tried to keep it...
You probably would have been if I had remembered to say that at the beginning of our...
Oh, I'm sorry you reminded you.
All right. Hi, my name is Chalmers Hardenberg. I live at 11 Somerset. I'm here to object to only one part of the revisions you have before you. I am for affordable housing. I'm a Ford at downtown. I approve of all the revisions to the standards. I'm opposed to only one part, the part that eliminates the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals. That's on page 11 of the draft you have. I'm pretty sure I know why that jurisdiction was axed out. Some people didn't like the decision by the Board of Appeals, which was a legally correct decision, which reversed the 22 Main apartment project approval. This is a terrible precedent to set, to get rid of the Board of Appeals jurisdiction, because some people don't like the decision the board made? What's next? Some developer doesn't like the board's decision not to grant a variance, so you'll eliminate its jurisdiction to decide on variances? As I said, this is a terrible precedent. It's not really conducive to getting more people to volunteer on the town boards, either. You want me to serve in this board, and as soon as some people don't like a decision we make, they'll just take away our jurisdiction? My last point is requiring residents who don't like a decision of the Project Review Board to go to the Superior Court is anti-democratic. We, as a town, we say we want social equity. This is a step backward. Take a resident who lives in one of the affordable housing areas we'd like. She thinks the Project Review Board, she, they made a mistake on some matter. She wants to appeal. Right now, she doesn't need an attorney. She can come right into Town Hall and file an appeal and get a hearing up right here in front of the Board of Appeals. If this change goes through, she'll have to go to Superior Court. Now, I'm a lawyer. I've been to Superior Court. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars. So will you revise the ordinance to make it easier for developers to build housing to less, to welcome the less well-to-do? Yes, good. At the same time, are you going to revise the ordinance to let only the very well-to-do, the very well-off make an appeal? No, that's bad. And Superior Court is not going to be faster. David Latulip, who is a member of the Central Core Working Group and a developer, he said, once someone appeals a decision into Superior Court, developers tend to give up. It's expensive, and it takes, he said, two years to get a decision. Now, this year, the Board of Appeals got the appeal for 22 Main in April. We decided in July. It would have been even quicker, but the attorneys for all the parties had to coordinate their calendars. In other words, the board took only three months to make a decision. Three months, two years? You take the, you can choose which might be better. But let's say you don't mind being elitist. Even so, I'm begging you not to take a meat axe approach to the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals. Let's put this change aside until the town looks at, as Carolyn pointed out, there are a lot of different places where the Board of Appeals comes in. And as Sam said, let's try to make it consistent. Right now, we have Design Review, which is before you, that is the Board of Appeals. Shoreland zoning appeals on the decisions of the Project Review Board or the Coastal Waters Commission go to the Board of Appeals. Site plan review, that goes to Superior Court. Subdivision ordinance goes to the Board of Appeals. Any appeals on that? So let's slow down. We have a consultant, we're going to hear from them next week on the comprehensive plan, and as Sam said, we're going to have a consultant look at the design review. Let's let them help us. I bet if you asked the Chief Justice of the Maine Law Court, Valerie Stansfield, if she wanted to have, if she wanted her Superior Courts to take on more cases, or if she'd rather have our town here appeals locally, she would say, please, keep it local. And that's what I'm suggesting we all do here. I'd like to have you vote to eliminate, or at least put off, this one change, until we can have the consultants look at the whole picture and look at each part of it. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Were you there?
No, I just...
Go ahead. Good evening, Guy Quitruchie. I'm going to, this is not where I was going to start, but I'll follow Chalmers and say, with the 9.2 appeals, removing the right to local appeals from the ordinance is a bad optic, considering it was invaluable in its recent successful utilization by the public in opposition to an ill-thought-out and inappropriate project at 22 Main Street. It appears retaliatory. It moves the goalposts. It seeks to mimic and legitimize the statutory illegal slap suit ploy. It curbs public participation, having the effect of censoring, intimidating, and silencing critics by burdening them with the cost of illegal defense in Superior Court until they either abandon their criticism or just their opposition. It robs the public of its voice. It produces a chilling effect, and it's intended to. I understand that part of the rationale for the change is to shield the personnel of various boards and committees from having discomfort in reviewing, reversing, or overturning a decision of peers. But elected and appointed officials need to be professional enough and adult enough to know that this is part of the job, and this is a lousy way to get out of doing it. The citizens of Freeport expect and are entitled to the most thorough due process to appeal at the local level. This proposed elimination poses an intentional barrier to the right to petition. The ordinance allows differing appeals ordinance, it's true, at different sections, but retaining the existing due process rights that this section is critical to the local process. Our officials repetitiously pledge to encourage public participation. Is that lip service? This is hypocritically counted to those statements. Strike the change. I'll continue with my other comments. Removing what's referred to as south of the railroad tracks from the design review might better be deferred for further consideration and well-represented involvement of the residential component in that district. It's an unusual development pattern there, for sure. But the west side of Main Street in that district, from the tracks down the shore, is almost a small village setting within a village, and it bears many of the contemporary New England village structure styles. Presents, to me, an attractive, soft, smooth, and inviting transition into the downtown. It'd be a shame to see that become a breeding ground for incongruous structures of development. On Section 2 material change, I would say buildings should be considered nearby when they are within a thousand feet of a project seeking design review approval. It's a more reasonable and representative view of an adjacent and surrounding area, both in terms of sense of place and visual. Sense of place is important. It buffers against unintended consequences. And if not a thousand feet, at least then consider the furthest boundaries of whatever lot line that that circle encompasses. I would say, not in closing, but to those who declare that our ordinances impede affordable housing development, I think that demonstrates a real lack of understanding of the current climate of development in general, and particularly affordable housing development right now, everywhere, not just here. The numbers don't work. They used to sort of kind of work before with subsidies. Right now, they barely work with deep subsidies, and there aren't those generous deep subsidies out there. I mean, if you happen to be a nonprofit or a non-governmental organization, you can have access to it, but you still have to find a developer that wants to work on that thin margin. It's not happening anywhere right now, and it's probably not going to happen much for a few years out, unfortunately. So affordable housing is, it's a tough one. It really is a tough one. So I would say to just observe the development patterns of Maine's traditional mid-coast towns, or take pride in the culture, I'm closing here, by the way. The culture, the history, the visual appearance of their downtowns and main streets. Bath was cast at Booth Bay Harbor, Damaskata, Rockland, Belfast, Sispo, Bahaba, go up the line. They've resisted the lure of predatory development and carpet backers out of a pride of ownership in the culture and their character and the appearance of their communities. They've focused on supporting and developing local business to enhance local ownership and employment and keep money circulating within the community. They practice the historic district conservation and preservation over unchecked growth and novelty, and they're thriving. They're all thriving. Pursuit of unending economic growth and expansion is neither a necessity nor a problematic strategy. It's out of date, especially for small towns. Land use ordinance supporting and encouraging local economies to promote thriving and well-being for all far outweigh pursuing growth for its own sake. Thank you, folks.
Hi, Kristin Dorsey. I'm going to go back a couple of pages more to follow up with what Bob Stevens said, talking about the concept of visual compatibility. I'm wondering if, as you continue to fine tune some of the language that suggests maybe you do lean more into historic preservation and away from that visual compatibility, which to me is also kind of subjective. I mean, in architecture, which I'm very, like, interested in, there are plenty of places around the world, you know, that are, have ancient ruins sprinkled in with, you know, modern buildings. I think buildings tell a story of a town's growth and progression and, you know, economic changes and things like that. So I'm not opposed to, you know, different architectural styles and time periods being co-mingled. So, but what does sort of disappoint me about Freeport's development, you know, back in the 70s, when they're, you know, jumping on that reactive retail mall bandwagon, which is, I'm afraid, what we might continue to do unless we really have a comprehensive plan that is, has long-range possibilities, is that you consider doing more architectural preserve, historic preservation. A lot of the buildings that you're referring to downtown that are historically significant, they really are just facades, because they've been gutted on the inside. And I'd hate to see that continue to happen. So if you perhaps think about preserving those older buildings, and, you know, as the years go on, different buildings then are, become considered, you know, historically significant, or, you know, in an architectural time period, that you really preserve certain specimens of houses inside and out, and then, you know, allow different styles and types of architecture to be built. I find it curious, it's just occurring to me now, as we talk about Depot Street, I'm not quite sure, you know, that, like, the mallet building comes to mind, which still is intact inside and out for the most part, and yet that giant mall is behind it. So I'm not really sure how that landed there, if what we've been talking about for the last, you know, six months or so raised so many hairs on people's necks. So, you know, it's just interesting. I think what happened was there were not a lot of, there were no zoning regulations, really, until the early 80s. So I think that's what we're kind of looking backwards at now. So maybe just consider doing more true historic preservation, and then that idea of compatibility kind of shifts a little bit. Thanks.
Thanks, Kristin.
Hello again, Jay Yelmas. I had one question, just for clarification, on page 6, about the Project Review Board. Does there have to be four members to, to have a meeting?
I missed a word in there. Would there have to be a...
Would there have to be a minimum number of people?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It has to be four to have a quorum.
A quorum, yep.
Okay. But if there were four, then the...
You'd need three.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. I think the, I think the effort to move things forward while still keeping good design standards is very helpful. I will just reiterate and support what Chalmers and Guy had brought to the forefront, which I think is something that really has to be considered. And I'll speak from my heart, very sincerely, to my friends and my neighbors and my fellow citizens, both here tonight and at home, to, I implore you to consider moving slowly on this idea of getting rid of the Board of Appeals in the capacity that it's being suggested to be, to be removed right now. We heard Eric speak and a few other people speak about how charming this town is and how the McDonald's is here. And, you know, we had this project at 22 Main that had an incredible amount of pushback. It was noted by Ford Reiki vehemently at the meeting about how much pushback was expressed and not enough respect given to it. And it gave the developer plenty of chance to modify, change roof lines and things like that. Meanwhile, as I understand and recall, Dave Latulip had, was at the same time, before or after, I can't recall, putting a project through that was, that was approved. And this, this Board of Appeals served as a check and balance, and I was one of the co-appellants. Okay? And I'm telling you, it was a godsend. Our lawyer said, you're lucky there was a Board of Appeals, because it's a, it's a much... Our lawyer said, "You're lucky there was a Board of Appeals, because it's a much, much more difficult task when you take it to court, to a place that's used to oftentimes rubber stamping and just saying, 'We don't want to deal with this.'" And I would just really, really leave you with this, to consider it. It doesn't mean that, it doesn't leave open the opportunity for a group that gets bent out of shape to appeal something, but I would ask you to find out how many times a situation like this 22 Main Appeal has really come up. And I don't know that there have been many. And I would beg you to look into that before you pass that change along. It's a check and balance. It reminds me of a funny quote that I heard, and that we have, the First Amendment is first for a reason, and the Second Amendment is there in case the first doesn't work. Checks and balances are really, really important. And I can tell you that we are very proud of this town, and we try to enhance it as much as we can, and we really would ask you to consider that one, very material and big change. So thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Linda Berger. I am a member of the working group. I'm also on the project review board. I want to just address the comments that were put forward by the FDIC about removing this, anything other than Main Street from the district. I feel that, and I think, Sam, you said this in the beginning, to have no restrictions, no review in areas in town where there are historic buildings is a great disservice to the historic features of this town and what we should be maintaining. And I think the point is also that the design review ordinance, it does not create a prohibition on anything. It is a guideline, and it's used by the board, the project review board, as guidance. And point in fact, the building that was presented for being built on Depot Street, that is Depot Street? That is the part that they're talking about now that they'd like to have no review on? Well, the board, the project review board, approved that building, given mallet houses, given whatever was around there, given the rules and the ordinance that were, in fact, in front of them, they still approved that building. So taking away a review is, I think, is a faulty reasoning, and it's not necessary. So I thank you very much.
I feel like you guys are getting warmed up now.
I'm just going to be quick. I'm Lorena Coffin, and I'm in the Historic District in Village One area. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the work that you're doing. I have a preservation background myself, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing to try to create some design standards. But I do just want to reiterate what some other people are saying, is trying to slow down the process a little bit. I think that you've taken on a lot, and you've just said yourself tonight that you're just really going to be looking at it for the first time tonight, to really dig into it as a group together. And you said you hadn't had much time to look at it. So I just think, again, sometimes you just need to review things and let it digest and see what the impact is. Because it just seems to me that you've got this LD 2003 coming up that's going to be impacted by this. You just talked about solar energy and creating these solar panels that can go 35 feet in the air. People have mentioned, I mean, other districts. There's overlays that haven't even been discussed. Right next to me, being in the Historic District, there is a water overlay, I believe. I can't remember, a water district overlay that Caroline might know about, that I've talked to her about. There's all these other impacts. So it's complicated, and it's a lot of work. So I feel like there's, I don't feel like just one meeting and going over it and checking it off is going to be for the best benefit for the town or for all of us. And I also just want to say that we have two federal historic districts here. So what we're talking about, shrinking the local historic district, which is something that we can do. But before we look at everything and how that's going to be impacted, again, I'm just sort of trying to reiterate, just slowing down and seeing what's going to happen. And I just find it interesting, I'm not trying to pick on Albin, but just reading this, and you just said that you had a walk, a walkthrough, I'm not sure you call it, but they're going to be taking down, removing a part of the original building, which seemed to me, just looking at this--
It's already buried, yeah.
Yes, I know. But it's just kind of interesting, as we're looking at this, and you're talking about center of town, center of our local historic district, that part of one of the original buildings, here we are, taking part down, part of a building down. It just seems very interesting for timing. So again, I'm just trying to reiterate, just slowing down. And also with the appeals project piece of it, I just think that is really important for someone in town. I mean, I feel like myself, I've had something that's happened with my property, and if I, not that I have gone to the appeals, but I wish I had. I didn't even know about it, because I feel like part of it is, is that there's not really enough communication sometimes. And so if you don't hear about it the first time, the appeals give you a chance to sort of know about it, because we did not get any notification about something that was happening next to our property. So it just gives you a second chance to be able to go to the town and ask questions. So just, again, thank you.
Hi, Howie Berger, 45 Intervale Road. First of all, as the working group, and thank you for doing that. And I'm sure we'd all agree on one thing: Rules are interesting. And you, as a board, are empowered to create the rules, which everybody has to live by, which is really good. And so when you look and consider rules, no matter which one of these ordinances as a whole or in piece that you change, it would seem logical that you'd look at what the benefit would be. And I didn't come here to speak tonight, but why would we, as townspeople, if we had a way to avoid going to court, which we all know is costly, why would we say we should eliminate that rule without understanding what the benefit would be? So if there was no Board of Appeals, which you have every right to get rid of, and if the Board of Appeals was not functioning correctly, maybe that's the reason you wanted to get rid of it, in your opinion, then you could make that rule change. But if you looked at it, who would benefit from that? Clearly from the people who spoke, not the townspeople. So therefore, someone who had means, who could then go to Superior Court, could basically benefit from having that rule changed. Otherwise, what would it do? If you did not like the way the appeals process went, change the rules of the appeal board. But don't get rid of the rule simply because the way it sounded, at least rumor in the town, people did not enjoy, if you will, the outcome. So in closing, you have great power, but in turn, you have great power also to protect the population or in favor of the population of Freeport, and take the different, if you will, factors into account. And I think protecting the people of Freeport speaks volumes over what you would get by eliminating the rule. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the room? Before we turn it over to-- Does it have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we have--
Caroline, can you wake the--
Do you have the remote for the TV over there? Nope, the remote. Oh, I think Sharon has it.
There's too many remotes in here. One, two, three. There's another remote here.
Okay, so Cecilia, you can try to click your click chair.
What's that?
I think I unclicked it.
Yeah.
So if anybody who is, I see five names up there, anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand, and we'll bring you over. And remember to unmute. I always want the Jeopardy! music for this moment. We'll give you another couple seconds here before we turn it over to the board for some questions. And if anybody wants to pipe up, we're not going to cut it off just yet. All right, quiet Zoom crowd tonight, that's okay. Questions from the board? Or comments? Thoughts? Or anything, really?
I don't need to go first. I've got lots.
I expected that from you, Mitch.
Yeah, but that's why I don't want to go first, so let other people talk. I'll do cleanup.
Anyone?
I guess I'm curious, after the discussion tonight, to hear how the working group came to the decision to get rid of the Board of Appeals process and go straight to that, your report.
Yeah, I think there was consensus among the board, and there were some, I think, yeah, it's important to say, not everybody agreed 100% that the appeals process should be altered in the way that is reflected in the recommendations. But there was consensus that the process of having one volunteer board review the decisions of another volunteer board on standards that, really, at their heart, are subjective, was not something that we saw in other towns, and just we saw, like, the, I mean, the phrase was used multiple times, "a second bite at the apple." You didn't like this decision, well, you can kind of roll the dice and take a second bite at the apple. And I hear, and I'm certainly sensitive to all the arguments against changing the process and leaving the Board of Appeals in place, but, especially the cost argument. But I have yet to hear a convincing argument that says that the Board of Appeals is differently qualified to consider these opinions than the project review board is. And so to say, yeah, the public comment period is not closed, so if you want to get back up in a few moments, then maybe we can. But I think the, yeah, it comes down to the second bite of the apple. To me, it's really not, I hear the, and I understand the public perception that it is a reaction. This is something I thought a lot about, how would I feel if a project went the other way? And I do feel, 22 Main Street, for me personally, speaking for me personally, I could see both sides of that. I could see, I think, there may be a path forward in the future that will ultimately be a much better outcome for the town with future opportunities for 22 Main Street. And if that's the case, then we do owe something of a debt to the people who appealed that project and the whole process as it was. But to me, going through that process again and relitigating future decisions, it's, again, kind of a roll of the dice for me, and it just doesn't make, it doesn't make logical sense for me to have that, again, second bite at the apple. I know I'm overusing that--
Could I make a comment here?
Of course.
So there's lots of things here I want to take issue with, but this particular change I want to support. And the issue is that the appeal must be based on a process error. It is never to be a second hearing of the good work of the project review board. And that's--
Very well put. That's kind of what I was--
So this is a very important point. And so my question is, what is the qualification of the appeals board to judge what is essentially a legal argument of whether the project review board did its job properly according to process? It is a process review. And I don't believe a volunteer appeals board has the wherewithal to make a sound decision on a process violation, which is the only reason that anything should go to an appeal. So I think it is, oh, and to the question of who benefits? The town benefits, because there will be zero development in this town under the current conditions. I believe this entire document is flawed from start to finish. And I believe that to have an arbitrary and capricious decision-making process on Depot Street, there will be no development until this is done. That's why I'm interested in the real review, because this will not fix the problem. And the town got together to create a downtown vision plan. And the vision plan depends on housing. If we don't have housing downtown, our downtown commercial space will decay. We do not have the retail support to support the retail space we have until we have housing downtown. So it is a paramount priority, and this is a years-long delay. So I feel very strongly on that one. I do want to say one thing about, on Guy's comment, you were the only one that made me wince, because the optics are bad. And I agree with that. And I don't want it to be a reaction. It's a reaction to thinking that no developer would come to town ever again after what was, after that process, in my opinion.
We do have one hand up on Zoom.
A hand up on Zoom. Great, Zoom. Let's give the Zoomers a chance. And Dave, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay.
So Melinda, I guess you already unmuted yourself, so you can talk now.
Oh, Melinda-- We're having a really hard time hearing you, very staticky. It almost sounds like, yeah, a broken connection is the easiest way to put it. No, unfortunately not. I mean, we can sort of hear you, but it's very difficult to understand.
Is he had something else on there?
Yeah. I was wondering if you turned down the volume on your computer, if that's what you're using?
And if that doesn't work, you could also call those phone numbers via a phone.
Yeah, it's very broke, it almost sounds like the, yeah, it's very staticky. If you wouldn't mind trying reconnecting and/or calling, I think there's like a voice--
There's numbers on the--
Yeah, there's numbers on the Zoom, or on the agenda that tell how to call into the meeting.
I think we just lost her.
Okay. Well, for anyone else who has problems, that might be the most reliable. Anybody else on Zoom who wishes to, will certainly come back to Melinda if and when she resurfaces?
I think Tom did.
So are you still taking public comment?
Hold on. Yes, we have not closed the public comment period. I just want to make sure that any comment is at the podium. Jay, I see you standing there like you want to come to the podium.
Yes, please.
Not to put pressure on you, but--
Thank you so much. Actually, I'd like to note that it's, I find it incredibly helpful to have public comment to be able to be, continue. Very important, because Mitch brought up some good points, and so did you, Sam. And I want to respectfully point out to Mitch that I really believe, and don't take my word for it, talk to other developers. I talked to the developer of 22 Main, the prospective developer, and he kind of quipped with me. He said, "If interest rates were 3%, I already would be at the Supreme Court," and I'm paraphrasing, but it was a function of dollars and cents. And I, don't take my word for it. If interest rates were 3% and costs were lower, you'd have building everywhere. I promise you. And that's something to be very cognizant about. The other point, in response to what Mitch said about a volunteer board, and I think Sam touched on it as well, reviewing another volunteer board, I'm okay with that, but I would also ask that some lawyers weigh in on that. I'd love to hear both sides, from real jurists that can explain why it's not such a good idea. If the first group of volunteers didn't make an egregious error, that has to be-- that, that, that has to be reversed by an expensive legal process. I'm not saying I know the answer, I'm saying I feel like I like my citizens and my neighbors, that is, citizens of my town, my neighbors, to, to be able to review it. But I would respect if, if a handful of lawyers got together, you know, I would suggest throwing our lawyer in, she is very, very knowledgeable and, and one of the things she said was, who, you know, this ordinance, it needs a lot of changes. She, she acknowledged that, so I'd recommend high and raised, yeah, so thank you for the work you're doing too.
Yeah, thanks Jay. Yeah. Thomas? Yeah, well, I mean, I, I know it's a little bit unconventional to leave, but I feel like this is the appropriate, you know, here we are, it's, it's only 8:07. So I, yeah, as long as, as long as, I mean, we're not going to do it forever, we're certainly not going to do it forever, but, but yeah, for now.
Much appreciated. Thank, thank you all for letting me get up again. I, as you may know, I was on the Board of Appeals.
Yes.
Made that decision.
Right?
And I agree with Jay that there was an error at the Project Review Board and I would love to sit down with everybody and talk about what we went through, what the PRB went through and just look at what happened. But the point I want to make is about one volunteer board reviewing what another volunteer board does. That happens all the time. You guys are going to make a decision on this ordinance, draft ordinance, and then it's going to go to another volunteer board. That other volunteer board is called Town Council. So I, I just feel that's, that's a rhetorical argument that doesn't really have any weight to it.
Well, I think, just to jump in once, I think the difference there is that, I mean, this is a process, like an iterative process versus a legal decision, right? I mean, the, like, it's a, it's a, am I right about thinking about a decision of the Project Review Board is effectively a legal decision, right?
Yeah, you guys make an advisory, a recommendation to the council or Project Review Board.
Right, so I think they're, you know, I understand, I understand the point that you're, that you're making, but I think that is an important distinction between what the Project Review Board, like the type of decision that they're making versus the process that we're, that we are undertaking here in making a recommendation to the council.
We don't do anything, the council does it, right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are sort of, like, I had to explain this to my six-year-old today, right? Because he's like, why are you going to so many meetings? This is ridiculous. And so, and I said, it's, what did I do? Now I'm forgetting the.
Took him to McDonald's.
Yeah, I took him to, yeah, eat these, just quiet.
Well, I just want to say, in terms of our qualifications, we had our own attorney there and he was ensuring that we were going by the book. So it wasn't as though we were some bunch of yahoos that just walked in and had no legal advice, no legal approach at all. So I, I, I don't know, you've heard what I have to say. It's a distinction without a difference, I think.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it doesn't matter what I, what I told my six-year-old, but it's, but I do think the distinction, that I, from my perspective, the distinction does matter, the, the type of decision that the, that the Project Review Board is making, so anyway.
Mr. Capitol, may I take my shot?
Of course, yeah.
I'm a little confused by, by the comments from both you and Mr. Rouda, don't just, actually don't totally agree. Everything, all the boards in town are voluntary, except for the council, which is an elected board. People on those boards are appointed based on their credentials to do the job that they're supposed to do. Everything that these boards look at in terms of reviewing ordinances deal with statutory requirements, statutory requirements. So either we should have no review boards that isn't a review board of attorneys, or we should have review boards who, as Tom has pointed out, have the benefit of council to guide them in that process. I don't see a flaw in that process at all. I think everything that these boards do are legalese and statutory, so I, I think it's a disservice and an insult to sitting members to, and you may not have implied this, I may have inferred this, you may not have implied it, to say, you don't have the qualifications to do that, even though we essentially hired you to do that. So we'll, I don't want to do, you know, we could debate forever, but.
Totally fair.
I just wanted you to know that I think there are other perspectives. And as far as Mr. Yuma has his points, and I say this as a former developer, people aren't developing now, not because our designer review standards are too restrictive, money is incredibly expensive, materials are incredibly, it's depressed, that, incredibly, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a very valid point, you know, and I think it's, it's absolutely true, it's impossible to refute, obviously, you know, everybody knows what interest rates are and, and most people who pay any attention, who have, who have tried to build like a deck or anything, right, in the last couple of years, you know it's incredibly expensive and so it isn't a surprise that there's been a slowdown in development. And I think where I take that information and, you know, I think what we as a board do with it, or what I hope we do with it, is we say, okay, well, if it is this hard to build, we need to find ways for the health of our community to allow people to build even in a difficult environment. And so I think that's, you know, I recognize, again, you know, I said this at the beginning, but I recognize that this is a, an imperfect move in that direction, but I do think it's an important step to try to lower barriers and provide additional clarity, however, however small that step is, to, to try to, to help, you know, some of these projects, if they're on the margins, to, to move forward. So I, you know, I take the point, but I think that saying, hey, it's so hard to build, nobody's going to build anything, if we just say, ah, yeah, it's so hard, well, I'm just going to have to wait three years, that to me is giving up. And I, I think we need to, as a community, you know, one, we have recognized as part of the downtown vision process that housing is a critical part of the downtown vision plan, it's a critical part of the health of our, of our downtown, it's critical to support our tax base, you know, these data are out there and so to take steps in the direction of improving that is really, that's my interest in this. So I, I understand, I think you guys are absolutely right, yeah, that fundamentally, that is the, probably the single biggest reason that we don't see more housing development, but to do nothing about it doesn't strike me as the right approach either, so.
Would you like to go over comment?
Sure. Why not? We've been so permissive, we're not going to cut off Bob Stevens. I appreciate that, just flying by the seat of my pants as you.
So I was picking up with Thomas, we're talking about a talk to the, to the judge and what, what Mitch was saying, that it's just process that's appealed, you know, I don't know whether, it's if I was a judge on this and it came to me, I'd say, how am I going to make any decision on this? There's so many subjective judgments that are involved in this process. I'd be inclined just to rubber stamp whatever came before me because I don't think I really have the qualifications to delve into what the board has considered in making its decision. I mean, I would, I would look at it and I would say, they had meetings, they had an ordinance, they made decisions based upon it? What's, what's, what's wrong with that? So I, meanwhile, what might not be looked at is the, the reality and the, and how, whether it was a proper decision. So the only way you're going to get that, I think, is to leave it to go to the Board of Appeals.
It's a question of whether it's a process violation.
Well, how would, what would the process violation be?
It's almost impossible to have a process violation against this document.
I agree, so it's a rubber stamp.
I feel like the, the Project Review Board had the power to do this and anything else is a, is a, a second trying of the same case.
Then there shouldn't be any appeal.
Unless there was, unless they didn't follow process, if they didn't hold a public hearing, if they didn't, that to me is the only basis for an appeal of their decisions, if they didn't do what they were supposed to do, but they did. They considered it and they voted.
Right.
So, I mean, and I want, we should adjudicate that case and I do understand your point and.
Right, 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 right.
I think for me, the biggest thing is, is to just push back and for me personally, against the, the sort of reactionary, I think to see it as purely reactionary or to see this, this recommendation of changing the appeals process as purely reactionary, you know, I think that appeals process for me highlighted some existing problems, but I don't think that that makes changing those problems purely a reaction. And I think it's true too that this, you know, this hasn't happened very many times, right? Like, there have been very few appeals, if, I've been, I haven't been here long enough to know if there are other appeals that are sort of parallel or similar to that, the 22 Main Street process, but I think, you know, I, I see it and I, again, I, I spent a lot of time thinking about this, both in and out of Central Court Working Group meetings and where I came down is that this exposed some process issues and so then the logical thing to do is take steps to address that. So I think the most logical thing to do from here is to respect. Okay, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
I'm Melinda, I was trying to talk. I figure it's quicker to drive down than trying to figure out how to work the computer.
Yes.
I was not planning to speak tonight, so I'm just kind of pulling my thoughts together, but I wanted to give a little person's perspective on the discussion regarding eliminating going to the Board of Appeals. And I really haven't talked about my story with the design review board, so this is my first time. In September 2021, the design review board had a meeting that I was not informed on regarding the construction of a new house on, in a Butters parcel and the approval involved going across a right-of-way on my property and I was never invited to the meeting, I was never notified about the meeting and by the time I found out about the meeting, I was past the 30-day appeal process. So I was told that I had to go through the court process, which I could not afford to do. This has caused me a great deal of harm since that meeting and obviously that was an error, probably not to invite me, but the meeting involved my property and I was never notified. So I know that you guys are discussing the big project on Main Street, but there's little people too that could get affected by eliminating the right for an appeal at a town level. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for making the trip here. Andrew?
Guess if we're weighing in on the, on the ordinance?
Yeah, we're going backwards now.
Yeah.
Appeals first.
So, well, you know, I, I got an issue with the appeals thing too and I've always been a proponent of local appeals board. I certainly was a proponent of the project next door and I was not happy with the way the appeals board handled it. I, you know, discussing, rediscussing, relitigating roof lines and all that kind of stuff, I thought it was a, personally, personally, I thought it was a terrible process, the outcome, and I was in favor of what the Project Review Board came up with, I was in favor of downtown housing, but I'm still in favor of having a local appeals board. I've had friends years ago, we used to go to all the planning board meetings, all these meetings and stuff in the 90s and 80s when this stuff was getting developed. One of my friends used the appeal board process twice and got, you know, a remedy and he would not have been able to go to Superior Court, just like Melinda said, he, you know, he argued a position of the Project Review or the Planning Board or something, took it to appeals and won and got his situation straightened out. And, you know, I wish that project next door had been appealed to Superior Court so we could have got a definition of a, a legal definition, I was hoping he would appeal it, I'm sure he was too far in the weeds and just, you know, didn't want to fight it anymore. But I don't think, I, I can't vote to do away with the local appeals process, I just think, you know, I think there's lots of problems with the ordinance, I think a lot of it's very subjective, I think what happened next door salted the earth in Freeport, long be, long before that happened, people weren't coming to Freeport to develop. I stood on, out in the hall out there and talked to a lot of developers who came in here and acted very polite, thank you, thank you, thank you, went out in the hall, bit their tongue, took a drink of water, went back in to get their job. So, you know, that's sort of how I see it, I think a lot of this is subjective, stuff like, you know, what's the scale? Who decides scale? Who decides, you know, what, what is, what is, I had one thing marked down here, what does it mean to blend well? What does blend mean?
Yeah.
Frank Lloyd Wright would never get a building in Freeport. He had the first, he had the second plate glass window in Chicago on his door, his previous boss had the first plate glass door, we don't allow them in Freeport. That was 1902. So, you know, I, I look at that old magazine, Discover Maine, shows all those nice old pictures from Easton Publication, you look at downtown Belfast, someplace, there's a three-story building next to a one-story building, down the street, there's a pharmacy that's, you know, maybe a flat roof, because that's what they built in 1902. And we're trying to recreate a, we're trying to make a Williamsburg village up here because everything has to be perfect and the world isn't perfect and development isn't perfect and, and we got to come to some, some, some different conclusion, I think, I don't know. You know, I, I just can't vote for this if we take the appeals board out, so that's, that's my line.
No, that's good to know, I think, thanks for stating that because I think that's helpful as we sort of proceed, you know, where I, I think I agree based with, you know, every, everything you said, maybe except the appeals board part, but, you know, I can certainly, I think hearing Melinda's story is really valuable because I think it does, you know, that we, we do tend to get caught in the.
The big things forget the little ones.
Yeah, and we, you know, so that, that's a very valuable perspective, again, thanks. If you live in the design review district, it can't have been that long a drive, but still, we appreciate you coming here. So it's, the, you know, I think it's where I come down on this again, and I'm going to keep beating this drum, whether you guys like it or not, is where we started, you know, because if we don't move this forward in some capacity, you know, and, and I, the way we, we approached it with, with the Central Court Working Group too, is we were willing at the end, we had a draft that was quite a bit bigger, did quite a bit more, and if there was a lot of opposition to things, we pared it back. We pared it back until we got something that could move forward and I really feel strongly that we need to move something forward because we need to take a step and anything we do to slow this process down, so even if we're pairing it back, slowing the process down is delaying a more thorough and more comprehensive and better look at what we really need to do in the future. And so I think we've heard from a lot of people in town, a lot of developers, a lot of, you know, a lot of townspeople, a lot of people who think about economic development, people who think about how the walk to school looks, you know, when they're going to Moore Street or Mass Landing or whatever it is, there's been a diverse group of voices who say that there's a problem here, this is a small step toward addressing that, I think these conversations need to happen, but I really feel like stopping this particular draft at this stage would do a disservice to the whole process. So I hope as a board, we can sort of come together to, sorry, Bonnie, I feel like I'm constantly turning this mic because there's more people over there, but it's not yet.
That's good, we're good.
So I, I want to, I really want to keep, keep in mind the same thing that the Central Court Working Group kept in mind, which is, are we making this document better or are we not? And if there are things in here, specific things in here that are not making it better, we can talk about removing those from this draft, but in general, if it's making it better, yes, we know it's subjective and I know the definitions are not perfect and I know that it's very hard to talk about, does something blend or not, but I think if we go back to the way it was before, it's even worse. So I, that's where, kind of where I come down on it is, you know, we should not let perfection be the enemy of the recommendation to the council. Yes.
Oh boy, we got to close this up.
You can't deny it, you know, once you, once you win Citizen, Citizen of the Year, you just get to keep going back as many times as you want.
What I was picking at were sort of picky things originally and they can be straightened out, that, that, so I think you're right, try to go forward with something. I don't think you should go forward with knocking out the Board of Appeals, I think you should take a vote here as to whether they're, you want that in it or not and then go forward with whatever you decide.
Yeah. I think that's, that, that may well be where we end up on, on that particular, like a straw vote on that and then a vote to, yeah.
I'm leaving, so I'm just going to, but I have one last question because I thought in the beginning, I thought, Carolyn?
Yeah.
I thought Carolyn said that this was sort of like, maybe like a bridge for like nine months, like, how long would this be used? So I guess when you're saying, I, I don't know if I feel like the same urgency that something has to be passed tonight because you're, we're going to be sort of like stonewalling something or delaying something. I mean, we're talking about something for, for a nine-month period and I feel like that's kind of like what's part of the problem is that I, as a resident here, not really knowing information if I wanted to do a project or something and literally I had been waiting over a year for something, to get information about something and I've not received it, I've kind of given up on it because it's probably not as. I've kind of given up on it, because it's probably not as relevant. But it's like doing these little tiny steps, things keep changing and changing. And that's part of why the codes enforcement officer was like, I can't answer you, I got to go look at that, and things like that. So it's like, it's nine months. I mean, what?
It's nine months, but it's also, we've been talking about this since 2019. So I, you know, I understand the, and I, so again, you know, in my, in my view on this, there's been a lot of time put into it. It is a relatively incremental step. It doesn't solve everything. But we need to, we need to move the ball on these issues. I mean, that's, I do feel very strongly about that. I'm sorry. I appreciate the, you know, the concern, but we have been having these conversations for years in the public setting. And I know that it's not everybody's cup of tea to come out to public meetings. I totally understand that. And I know that the town has a lot of, of work to do on communication, too. And I think, you know, we, I say we, I'm not technically town staff, I'm just a volunteer. But I do hope that we can, we can improve the communication, too. So, Matt, you have something?
Well, I wanted to make two comments. The first comment is, there are lots of improvements in here. So I, and I think there's good work in here. So I'm, I'm wondering, could, just as a process, could we just, I, I basically changed my mind on the appeals thing, just because I think it's too hot. And so if we're trying to make incremental improvements and get things done, I'm wondering, could we go through this document and just decide what's okay and at least push that forward?
In the spirit of how I've handled this, and for those of you who, I didn't even say this, but I was the chair of the Central Core Working Group, too. I don't know if that matters. But that, I, that was very much in the spirit. I am perfectly happy to do that here, even though I supported the change, and I will continue to support the change. But in the interest of moving this forward, if it's a hot-button issue that needs further to, fine. I am totally happy with that. So.
Proceededly, are you guys still taking cover? Are we going to close public comments?
I think we should close.
I think we should prob, I see Linda.
We haven't, we haven't started.
I would like to go through this and make some comments.
Yeah.
And maybe we can agree to...
So I think it's good, I think that, you know, we've heard a lot of comment on the appeals board. Linda, if you have something super quick that you want to add before we close the public comment?
A one-sentence thing. I think, as you say, incrementally, this is helpful. There are so many little things that have been moved out of the, the vision of the Project Review Board and to, I'm sorry, Caroline, but to the planning staff, that is going to help the time that we spend and the people, the little things that people need to do. So I think it's very important to get that done and move forward with those, at least those things, if not pretty much everything, except the appeals.
Yeah. Thanks for, for that reminder as well. All right. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion. And I saw a second nod from Dave.
We could water break before you guys.
Yes.
I think it might make some changes, wanting to get some...
I'm not, it's not, I have only, I have one hot issue, but yeah.
Okay. We'll wait for...
Little, little edits.
And I am certainly aware of the time, but also, I want to get, I want to get it done tonight. We're not coming back for this, so. I feel strongly about this. I'm sorry. I put a lot of time into this, and I...
Definitely. I understand.
We're either doing it, or we're not. For anyone watching, Caroline's run out for a quick drink. We'll be right back.
I'm going to have to do that, too, actually.
Yeah, all right. Let's take, let's, I'm going to set a timer for two minutes. Just because we need three.
I'm ready to start my ride. I've been taking the bus here, so.
You're so... It's not going to be bad. Project Review Board, stuff was happening downtown. No, 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 I was just looking, just interested in land use issues. I've always been up. I've been upset. All this scandal has laid the ground for us here.
Well, we're telling the report. Yeah. I'm not paying attention. Maybe some... I don't care. I just want to think. Assume, but right now, it's not, it's not... Should we have, for two more minutes? Or should we have any, 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 or whatever project you want, the other way around? Got me wrong. Yeah. Still, I'm not paying attention. Good. I'm not getting there. I think things are moving now.
Well, that's kind of where I was supposed to be. You're standing up for people on board now, so. That wasn't the subject. Well, because I was comfortable with it. So I'm trying to...
Oh, yeah? Yeah. Is that, is that... Yeah. 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 I didn't really, I appreciate it.
Are we related to, oh, guys? Yeah. Shelley, Shelley Cervantes.
We don't have, certainly, yeah. Okay. Are we going to have a great class like that? No, no, no. I'm saying, you had, the other county, those people, you know, you've got a board, you have to qualify what your policy is. What you're saying. It's not like, it's not like... It's quite okay.
Oh, yeah. Never met. Oh, come on.
I think, um...
It doesn't hurt, really.
I know, I know.
It's good.
Yeah. Sorry to folks in the back to just pay attention. It's riveting stuff. We're going to go through any, any other questions and comments from the board now. So we've talked about the appeals process. I feel like we don't even really need to take a straw vote to say that we can advance whatever we do end up advancing with that part of it removed. It seems like that's kind of the consensus at this point. I know where Andrew stands. I see nods from, and right there, I don't even, that means we don't even matter, Bonnie, by the time we get down here. So, so I think...
When you go through it, I'd like to pause on the appeals thing, because there is a new portion. And if you decide to change a lot of stuff to town planner approval, you really should have an appeal process.
Correct. Yes. So that's an important point. Yeah. So we should, we should definitely leave in the part that clarifies that decisions of the town planner would go to the Board of Appeals. Because that was not there before, right?
Correct.
So we would leave that part in our changes to the appeals process. So, okay. That's a good clarification.
So we go through in order?
Yeah. And we'll try to, we'll try to keep it brief. Again, everybody, I'm going to keep, everybody remember, is it making it better or is it making it worse?
This is out of order, but the only one that, everything here is small, I think, except the map. And I, and the map is at the very end. So I hate to make that the last thing we talk about.
Does, let's, let's see if anybody has any stuff that's not map-related, and we'll go...
There is stuff that's not map-related, but it's not mod, I mean, yeah. Okay, we can save it to the end. That's fine. I just, it's a big one.
It is a big one. I'm looking at you, Dave, because I saw you nodding, but...
No, no.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't have anything significant otherwise.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions from anyone on anything else?
You want little things? I mean...
Sure, if there's typos or anything, yeah.
We should go page by page and probably do it.
Page six. Roof material. What happened to metal roofs?
It got axed.
Why? I think that's...
I have a metal roof on my house, so clearly it was not my idea to ax metal roofs from the, although I already have my permit, so it doesn't affect me anymore. But it, so the, the sense was that the roof materials that should be allowed to be exempt are ones that mimic historical, historical materials. And standing seam metal was deemed to be sort of a more modern tech, even though, you know, I, my personal, well, so my personal opinion is that it is meant to mimic like a flat, you know, a tin, tin roof. It's very much, in my opinion, a historic, historic roof. But there was enough pushback from other members of the Central Core Working Group that that was not a hill I was going to die on. So...
It doesn't mean they're not allowed. It just means they're not allowed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It just means, it just means you have to go to the board to get your, to get your, which I did, and it wasn't bad. It was like five minutes. It wasn't a big deal. So...
They were nice to you.
Yeah.
And the only other, very minor, is page 13. You shall notify. And like, why are you saying?
Ooh, okay, yep.
Please do not.
What line?
What does it say there?
Third line, yep.
Third line down.
Section 13.
Section 13A.
A.
Yeah. Please.
Right.
Does it say that?
Do we say "they"?
Yeah.
I know, it, it, it's still is hard for me to...
I think, I would just make it "the officer."
Yeah, there you go. That's a much better...
Just the CEO and then...
Right. Whatever. It's right, right here. There's a...
If the code enforcement officer shall...
So, yeah, we would put "they."
"They," thank you.
"They shall notify in writing."
Is it "the officer"?
Yep. Said "officer." Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, that's a good catch. I try to be good about those ones, but...
I have that noted, changing it to "they." It's our standard terminology now.
Great. That's fine.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
Okay, I have a few.
Okay.
Would, anybody else? I don't know. It's not too much, but the first one is on page two.
Yep.
I just wasn't sure I understood what neighborhood significance it's all about. And I don't know if it needs any clarification, but we've tried to clarify things, and I just didn't know what that meant.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Neighborhood significance. I mean, it could have neighborhood significance. I just didn't know whether, is it historic or not? I mean, I'm all for historic preservation ordinance here.
Yeah. I think that's really interesting, you know...
It's like, why don't we have one? And it was brought up several times. It seems obvious that we want to protect those buildings, and that none of this has anything to do with, this does, this thing does two things. It protects buildings sorta kinda, not really that well.
Right. Four-month notice period.
Yeah, that's all it does. But anyway, but we can't fix that today.
Right.
So I was just trying to see if there was any language that could make that clearer, what it meant.
Yeah.
You don't have to fix it, but...
Right. I think it's, it's really, it's just trying to differentiate or sort of give a little bit of a framework for a set of, a group of buildings that might be similar or that might share some geographical and, yeah.
I believe that, I don't know, Eric, so, is that related to the National Register definition, you know? I thought somebody said closely mimicking...
Eric, can we have you go to the podium? Sorry, Caroline's stealthy tonight. She's wearing a clip-on mic, so she can just talk, but everybody else has to go to the podium.
Sorry, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're still here.
The short answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
I do know that a lot of the, what is considered subjective language in this ordinance comes actually from well-accepted historic preservation language, specifically from not just National Register, but National Park Service language. So I think this comes back to, while it's not commonly understood to say, well, what does that mean in the historic preservation sense?
That's good enough for me.
historic preservation language, specifically from not just National Register, but National Park Service language. So, I think this comes back to while it's not commonly understood to say, well, what does that mean in the historic preservation sense?
That's good enough for me.
Yeah. So, I did a fair amount of searching other towns' ordinances and looking for different definitions of some of these same terms in putting this together. And I was expecting to find like lots of different... And a lot of the language that was in here, even in the... I mean, I would say that...
It matches others.
Visual compatibility was the outlier. That definition in the existing design review ordinance is terrible. And so, other... In my opinion, sorry to whoever wrote that. But the... There are better definitions of visually compatible, but a lot of the language that is in the definition section exists in slightly altered, but more or less recognizable forms in other towns, especially towns that, you know, I've heard somebody mention Bar Harbor tonight. We looked at Bar Harbor. We identified that as a town that had some desirable things. We looked a lot at their ordinances, tried to sort of mimic some of the stuff, some of the language that was in there to make things clearer. And so, a lot of this language is widely used.
Comes from some other model code. That's fine. Okay, so, page three.
Yep.
First of all, I wanted to praise the group on that redefinition of visually compatible, and particularly such that abrupt or severe differences are avoided. I thought that was as good as you could do.
Cherry-picked, right out of Bar Harbor, I think.
Was really good. But I didn't know what the word "imme..." I just thought "immediate streetscape." I wondered if that needed definition. What is immediate?
I would read that as like right out front, but...
Okay, well, that... I just circled that word like that's, you know, you hear your word trying to define nearby, and I don't know what immediate is.
Yeah, I mean, we could say nearby buildings and nearby...
Adjacent. What if you just said adjacent?
I think that's up for interpretation. I mean, could you say... So, what would happen if we put nearby in there? Would that sort of automatically...
Nearby streetscape? I mean, I think you are trying to create... That's what that 500 feet is about, is make the whole block look right.
I think it'd be better to go nearby because it does leave it... And adjacent does too, because like when we say adjacent, you know, for like a better notification, we go across the street, but to you, that might not be adjacent. So, I think you clearly define nearby, and so that gives you a starting point.
I have one comment on page... About the cover... On page four, where you deleted the color overlay district.
Sorry, can I just... So, are you guys agreeing on that one to say nearby buildings and the nearby streetscape?
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
On the color overlay district, I just thought it was important for the public record that there's still a protection of compatibility with nearby buildings. So, if somebody wanted to paint... I mean, if somebody wanted to paint polka dots, that could be... That could still be acted upon or not acted upon?
We really struck all most references to color in here. We've never looked at that. It's never anything we've acted on, so I would want to say no, but it would warrant further exploration. It's not something we... We talked about people doing just that.
We're trying to keep things compatible and give the project review board some, you know, some ability to say this doesn't mess everything up.
If you go with this draft and you come in and say, "I want to paint my building," most people wouldn't come in and disclose they want to put polka dots. I would say you don't need approval for color in design review, as this is written today.
Yeah, I think the... I think one of the things that came up... Because at one point, we had a more substantial materials section that had some guidelines that said, you know, for example, all of the building materials of one type on a given facade have to be the same color. So, in other words, if you have clapboards, you know, on a facade, you have to paint all your clapboards the same color. If you have shingles, like on the top gable, those could be a different color. Those could be... Well, it was trying to sort of like put a little bit of guardrails on and sort of say...
In that situation, you might very well want to paint them different colors.
Well, that's kind of where we ended up, is, you know, maybe... And this is too... And the other thing, I think, that came up from members of the project review board who have this context is to say, "Well, paint is really easy to change." So, if somebody came with a proposal and, you know, the clapboards went up primed, that might meet a proposal, and then you just paint the building. And there's no, you know, if we're not regulating painting buildings for anyone else, then why are we considering that for new buildings? And what does that approval do? It protects the first couple of years of its life, and then somebody just repaints it, and it's sort of off and on its own. So, we stepped back from regulating paint and those sorts of, you know, like surface treatments. So, yeah. Does that make sense, Caroline? Did I sum that up acceptably? Yeah, this... That discussion occupied a pretty good chunk of time.
So, on page 10. Now, I'm on page 10. And... A building's materials... In the middle, your addition, "A building's materials should contribute to its architectural significance and be visually compatible." And I would like to strike "contribute to its architectural significance and" because I don't know what that means.
So, you're saying under number seven?
Under number seven. Just those words. We already have "is visually compatible," which is big enough to drive a truck through. So, you can, you know what I mean? It gives tremendous leeway to the project review board, so I don't want to give them any more teeth about, oh, it's not architecturally significant and get into that argument.
So, you do... Just to clarify, you do define architecturally significance, and, you know, I read it. You wouldn't want to put some kind of feature on a historic building. That's not appropriate. So, for example, if you have a cute little mallet building, like we have so many of... Wouldn't...
Corten steel siding.
If you come in and just put all plate glass on the front, they might see that definition and be like, well, that's not really a traditional feature.
Well, maybe it should not alter, should not degrade its architectural... In other words, I didn't realize that you were referring to A and B buildings. And again, this is where a historic preservation ordinance might fix the problem here. If the issue is you don't want... I get it. If you're trying to protect A and B buildings, that's clear.
I don't say that because I feel strongly one way or the other. I just want to make sure.
I'm worried that a C building, they're going to say, "I don't think that contributes to its architectural significance." And I think the issue is whether it's compatible or not compatible.
Yeah, I see like the way I would interpret this if I were on the project review board, I guess, in that sort of thought experiment. If a new building, you know, like a permit... A design review permit for a new building, I think we're trying to say the kinds of materials that we want to see in this district are the kinds of materials that would contribute to a similar building types architecture. So, like...
I can give you an example if you want. So, for example, we had a project that was approved on Depot Street for multifamily housing on the corner.
The big one.
Yeah, Mail and Depot. And so, they came in with a design, and the board struggled with whether or not it was compatible. And so, the developer went around and looked at A and B buildings, like literally walked around and looked at them. And when they came back, they incorporated some architectural features that they saw in A and B buildings. So, if you look at the facade facing... The primary facade facing the road, you'll notice that there's some cute porches and cute roofs, and they picked those right up off the mallet building. You'll notice there's some bays. You'll also see those bays on Main Street. So, that's a way those have been kind of incorporated into a C building, but make those ties with the As, Bs, if that helps.
I'm just trying to figure out whether "compatible" solves that problem.
So, you would say a building's materials should be compatible...
And that's why they picked up from the A and B buildings to show... And particularly with... Visually compatible with nearby A and B buildings. It says that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll let you.
I know you're not taking public comment, but I'm just wondering if in relation to that question, if it's really the matter of where the "should" is? And if it would not be better read, "A building's materials contribute to its architectural significance and should be visually compatible with other..."
Totally different meaning.
It is a totally different meaning.
That's saying that we're paying attention to the materials because they matter. Yeah, and they should be compatible.
Right.
That solves it for me.
I think it's a different meaning. I'm not sure I like it better, but I am happy with it. Does that make sense? I'm happy enough with it that I am very willing to move forward with that. I'm so agreeable, it's ridiculous.
Can we strike the word "other" there?
Sure, yeah.
With near... Yes, "other" is not necessary.
I mean, I guess, yeah, with nearby...
Nearby, maybe.
If it's on an A... If it's on an A or B building, then.
Yeah.
It's on an A or B building.
With all of them. Yeah, I mean, "other," I guess it was implying...
It's implying that it's...
I keep putting a filter of new construction, and this is intended to...
It's all.
Okay, so I have you moving "should" to between "and" and "be," and then striking "other" for number seven.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's good. Not fine. It's good. There are good changes.
Okay. The only other comment I had was on the map and about the... I mean, one question about the appeals from the town planner...
Yep.
To the project review board.
You mean to the...
I mean, to the Board of Appeals. And I was wondering about that, again, on the same issue that I brought up before. If it's a process problem, if you did something... If the staff did something wrong in process, it seems appropriate to go to the appeals board to say that process was wrong?
So, I can clarify... Let me clarify after you.
I'm trying to figure out, shouldn't the PRB get involved if it...
So, there's reasoning for that. So, anytime... Every time you guys up the threshold for staff approval, I get nervous because it always makes more room for staff to make a decision that people won't agree with. You know, you've done a good job here, I think, of the proposal being very clear as to what staff can approve. So, if you don't meet that specific window thing, not going to approve it. If there's something that's borderline, or I think might not meet it, and it's going to cause an issue, typically, I'll be like, okay, I can approve it. You get to go to project review.
You're not denying it. You're just saying you have to go to the...
Right, yeah. In some case, yeah. We usually don't deny. We say you get to go to project review. And quite often, people don't want to go to the board, so if I say, hey, if you shrink that by 100 square feet, I can sign off on it, and they'll be like, I'll be back in an hour. But when you have... When you go to the project review or another board, you have a clear record. You have findings. You have notices of decision. There's... It's just very formal. We have been so limited in staff approval ability, we've handled it very casually. Send me something, I'll mark the plan, I'll sign it. You know, we'll send you an email. And so, in order to go to Superior Court, you need a record, you need findings. And so, going to the Board of Appeals, who can handle those appeals and is used to seeing some stuff like that, project review board is not an appeals board. They don't have the same right under law. So, if we want to send it locally somewhere, we would send it to Board of Appeals. If you send something to court, you need a record. So, if you send a piece of paper with a drawing and Caroline Pelletier's signature on it, the court's going to kick it back. So, knowing that staff approvals are small, they should be clear and not controversial, we hope that it's been unlikely. We haven't had... Ever had one appealed since I've been here. But we need a process somehow in there to create that record in case it does go into court. Sorry, that was a lot of information.
I'm just trying to figure out, is the record better created at the appeals board or at the project review board?
Yeah, the attorney said we don't... Because legally, under law, the project review board doesn't function in that way that we would... If you're going to have a good board...
It doesn't have jurisdiction over those things because you took it out of their jurisdiction.
It's got to go to...
I understand. It sounds like in practice, it really depends on how you frame your... Like, if you were to say, "No, I deny that," but realistically, that's not happening. You're saying...
We... Yeah, we'd bump it out.
You need to make some changes, and/or you can go to the project review board, which is sort of...
I guess that's the point. You could always go there.
You can always, you know...
Yeah.
The planner always has the discretion, I guess, to say, "This would be better served by going to the project review board," and that sort of function.
And you know, it happens quite a bit, and then they go and they approve it, and I feel bad, but that's what it is.
Well, yeah, that's the process, so... Okay.
You still got comment time?
Yeah, sure.
Pre-map, yes.
Pre-map.
Pre-map, then, yes.
Here's my concerns. Whether they have to be changed or not, it's up to everybody else. Page one, special intent. Line three, district in terms of scale and appearance. What is scale, and who decides... What's the definition of scale? That's page one.
Well, isn't that defined?
Oh, yeah, but it's still... I think it's sort of loosey-goosey.
Here. It's on... It's here.
Page two, historical significance.
What's the proposal there?
I'm just pointing it out, that's all. I'm going down my list and pointing it out.
All right.
My concerns. What the answer is, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it's once again...
Yeah, I think, just to respond briefly on scale, so scale and height, we batted around a couple of ideas for objective standards, like, I forget what the... It doesn't matter what the particulars are. Like, say, if the proposed building is no more than 30% higher than the median height of nearby buildings, it meets the height standard. Something like that. Something where you could go around with a, you know, laser or whatever and measure the buildings, and you could say, this either meets the standard or it does not. You know, that was the sort of thing we were trying to get to, and it...
Dreaming of.
Yeah, and it is possible, but it was difficult, and it was going to be... It was going to take a lot of meeting time and a lot of somebody's time to get there, and we ultimately said, you know what? We want to move this, and we want to get that on the next round.
It seemed like it was better left up to a professional...
Yep, exactly. And that's where we ended up with scale, too.
I'm just not... I'm just not scared of buildings being different heights, that's all.
Yep.
Historical significance, once again, you know, it says, you know, determine the historical significance. Who decides this, associated with the events which contributed to the formation and development of town? You know, who decides what's the significant time period?
Those were decided off the original inventory sheets that were done in the '80s and 2007.
Same page, neighborhood significance. You know, it says, talks about which period. Settings representing a period important to the evolution, which period? You know, Freeport's an old town, which period? We've been through page three, Blendwell. I had a concern about that. Okay, we're over on page nine. Once again, scale of the building. I just thought it was too subjective. Scale of the building and height, so those are my... Those are my concerns.
Yeah. Yeah, I think...
And page 10, there was one. You know, we just went through this whole thing with moving the word "should," but I really don't want to be cloning A and B buildings. I mean, I think it's good to pick up stuff on them, but I don't want a town full of A and B buildings. I'd like to have a little variety. All these towns were built with variety for 100 years, 200 years, so I'm not scared of it.
Yep.
And then, of course, I'm, you know, I'm... I hope we're all out with the appeals process.
For now, yep. Or, yeah.
That's my... That's my list.
I'm just wondering what to do with your list.
Nothing, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I see it as...
My comments, that's all.
I see it as stuff to...
In nine months, it's going to be reviewed again?
Yeah.
Or whatever... Oh, a year, whenever this thing happens? I just think... I just think it's, if I was reading this thing, okay, what's the scale? Who's the scale?
Right.
Who's deciding the scale?
Yeah.
You know, as an applicant, I want to be able to read the ordinance and decide that I can read the ordinance and figure out what I have to do to meet the ordinance.
And of course, it's the whole problem with the whole document.
Well, you know, I mean, there's been two or three cases... Two cases at the law court, and one of them was the applicant... One of them clearly said in Yarmouth, Wakeland versus the town of Yarmouth, which was said, the applicant has to be able to understand by reading the ordinance what he has to do to pass or fail. And, you know, these are very subjective definitions. And I'm not saying they're bad definitions. I'm not saying trying to make buildings in downtown Freeport look better or look nice or can continue our historical look. I'm just saying somehow, we got to get to a point where the applicant, you know, and then we don't have fights at the Board of Appeals, and then we don't have fights at the... You know, the applicant come in and say, okay, you know, Freeport says we can have a flat roof building, 30 feet high. We had one next door. It was overturned because the roof wasn't right. You know, nobody liked the roof, but it was in the ordinance. So, you know, okay, you want to get more developers to come to town? Somebody's got to have, you know, somehow along this process, we got to be able to come to some conclusion where the applicant is part of this whole process. Because if we can't get an applicant, we can't get anything done.
Yeah. No, I think those are all... And for those in place this wasn't clear to anyone on the board or anyone in the audience, that the idea behind the Central Core Working Group, when the council formed it, was that that same group of people would continue to work closely with consultants to help shepherd this next round of design review changes or potentially complete, you know, scrap and restart, so that that group will continue to work through this process in the next round. At least that was the intent, and of course, the planning board and other boards will be kept in the loop along the way. So, much more to come. I know Mitch is just dying to talk about that.
Well, I mean, in the interest of it being 9:00 PM...
Yes, totally.
And with due respect to your desire to pass something, and knowing that adjusting this map may be, you know, problematic, but I can't for the life of me understand why, you know, certain areas are still included in here. You know, Mallett Drive and Depot Street and the back of Justin Way. I mean, that's where we should be building new buildings. And those are the precise places where you would expect it, and they're still, you know, sitting under here, and there's nothing to protect there. sitting under here, and there's nothing to protect there. That zoning doesn't already protect, in my opinion. So I don't understand why this map can't be, but I know you had a working group.
There was a, yeah.
So I want to respect that.
Yep. There was, there was a lot of discussion about this. I think a lot of people who even, and I guess I would put myself in this camp, actually. I totally agree with you that I think Mallett Drive could be, I think part of the reason for leaving it in now is that there is a pretty relatively large re- reimagining of Mallett Drive that's kind of in the next couple of years, coming down the pike. So I think, in the, I know it seems like we're trying to move really quickly, but, but we are moving incrementally, and I think in the spirit of, of moving in one direction rather than like the in and then the back out, I think that was kind of what informed our ultimate decision to recommend just the one simple change. We did have, at one point, it was much more, you know, we chopped off at Justin's Way, we chopped off Mallett Drive, we shortened along Route 1 North, we cut out part of South Street, we even cut out part of Bow Street. It was much tighter. And then we ultimately decided to start with this.
It's marked here.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we basically did exactly. We even went like that.
Right, 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 yeah.
So it was sort of drawn here.
Sorry, Stan, I just want to second that. We had a big conversation about that, and we had shrunk it down and marked it up. I advocated to keep Mallett Drive out, you know, but looking at it, the thing that, I'm like, you know, we have to do compromise. One of the things the vision noted is that we need to not only look at our design standards, we need to look at the underlying zoning district. We saw some visioning for Mallett Drive. Mallett Drive's super neat because it has this crazy wide.
Boulevard.
Right-of-way. We're gonna have a boulevard. So although we left it in, I think this is an area, we're bringing in a professional consultant who looks at the design standards, the funky right-of-way, everything we're doing there, and then some of the underlying zoning, we could get a good product. So that helps me, you know, move it forward. But it was great, we had great debate on the.
Yep.
Boundaries.
Anybody else? Thoughts on the map?
No.
Content to move forward as is?
Yep, yep. It can be reviewed again in a while, yeah.
Yeah, yep. Okay, well, we've made a couple of changes, significantly to the appeals process that.
Oh, do we need to?
Yeah, we need to take a look at that. You know, I think however you decide if you take it out, when this goes to council, it'll be noted that, it'll be noted what changes you made and what kind of came out of the commercial, or, sorry, Central Core Working Group. I think the only, I guess, the one issue doing stuff on the fly, so we added the administrative appeals, we being the town attorney, gave us that language. Because this draft was proposing to strike, the Board of Appeals process for the project review board, the wording would have to be a little bit different since we can't really create that on the fly. I think, I guess I would, if you want to keep it in to make the change, I think you'd have to maybe keep the number one, maybe change the heading of number two, so instead of Appeals to Superior Court, it's PRB Appeals. And then maybe leave the language that was in there, in there, knowing, acknowledging that you put it back in at the meeting, it probably warrants some legal review, and we'll see if it's something we could clean up. You would also, if you're gonna do that, need to leave in on page 12, if you're going to leave in the option for the appeals from PRB to Board of Appeals, you then need to leave in that you can appeal the Board of Appeals to Court.
So since we have a meeting next week, could you give us the language then?
What, you wanna?
We don't.
Oh, we can't notify.
We have to notify, though.
Yeah, you can't, would have to notify.
You mean, if you make changes, we're gonna need to have another public hearing?
Significant changes.
Yeah, if you do another public hearing. I mean, I definitely don't feel like, I feel like if you yourself want to work on changing this, correcting the appeals section, we could bring it back in January with this cleaned up. We'll notify people. We'll have to see if we need to do another.
I think a cleaner way to do it is to.
Hearing or not.
Flag it for the council.
I think, you know, knowing that, I know it's something the council's probably gonna want to talk about. The last time you guys talked about changes to site plan, you flagged the Board of Appeals issue for them in the site plan, so it might be something they want to look at. I guess I would probably, if you want to move it forward as is, just kind of, I think we could make a little, you could just make a little change to.
The intent.
Rename number two, Project Review Board Appeals. I guess, strike the new language, keep the old language as is. And then, you know, in the meantime, we can reach out to the attorney and see how to best handle that. You know, worst case, if it, I guess I'd almost rather go to council for discussion at this.
You just, you just, you just put a two right there and get rid of that?
So where you have Appeals to Superior Court number, I guess you could.
That paragraph gets deleted.
Yep, and then.
And you put a two, and it says Appeals from PRB goes to the Board of Appeals.
PRB Appeals, and then keep the rest of it. Yep, much better way to explain it, Mitch. Thank you.
We're just striking the line two and reinstituting everything under it?
Yeah.
Yeah, striking that new paragraph two and making that Appeals a new number two.
And leave the, that number three.
Yep.
Would become number three down there, that Appeals.
Appeals to Superior Court becomes number three.
Yeah, that becomes, you just keep, they could still appeal to Superior Court.
Yep, and there, and keeping that in, there might be some non-substantive changes that we could make to that section.
Okay, so all the stuff that's been axed is back in?
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, um, yep.
Is somebody gonna have to capture all that in a motion?
Yes.
I think somebody could, you know, make a motion to note as amended at the meeting. We could note sections if you want, if you.
Oh, I don't want to.
Yeah, I think you could note as amended. I can read the whole thing if you want to review all the changes you guys just made. There's nearly not that.
Not that much.
Any. Nope. So you changed the definition of visual compatibility to change the word immediate to nearby.
Yep.
You, hold on, let me make sure I have my mic on so I don't get in trouble. You.
Will your summary here suffice if we just say as amended?
Yes. So when somebody says as amended, it refers to this moment.
On number seven, page 10, you moved the should to the, you should be visually compatible with other. You struck other, so it should be visually compatible with nearby A and B buildings. And then on page 11, you struck the new four-line paragraph two. You brought back the old language, just head of that new number two, Project Review Board Appeals, and then you added back in number three, Appeals to Superior Court. And on page 13, we corrected gender terminology to change he to they, and the map would go forward as proposed.
And you have to change the headings to under, so two, you'd then have to change the one to an A and the A to a one.
Sorry, where are you there?
On page 11. Right, to be consistent.
Oh, um.
It's just a minor thing.
Oh, yes, and so.
You'll just change the.
Reformat.
Reformat the.
The bullet, reform or that outline.
Well, if you just delete Administrative Appeals, it works. Oh, no, I see, I see. There's an A and a subset.
Yeah, okay, so this is what you can do. You can do number two, Project Review Board Appeals. Appeals from a decision of the Project Review Board under this ordinance may be taken to the Board of Appeals. Then you can strike that Administrative Appeals and just go into A.
Strike Administrative Appeals, and you're good.
And then go into A, yep.
Absolutely right. All right. Well, fun. Somebody want to take a crack at making a motion?
Make it out of the fly?
And just a reminder that it has to add, did I beat you to it almost, that, that any motion has to be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan?
General harmony.
General harmony, the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Do you want to read the?
I wish I had, I wish you had.
Yeah, you should have binders right over there that have comp plans in them.
Usually, if you look at the first page of the comprehensive plan, that's good enough. Two. Uh-oh, where is it?
Replicating the traditional pattern of current and changing those traditional architectural designs, what is allowed through development patterns and content to our area.
Well, I'm not sure I am following why.
You're protecting natural and historic resources.
Yeah, so you can find one of these that, you know, this is a good one. Right? So it, so the, so that these changes are found to be in.
Particularly.
Because of this and, you know.
There's also some economic development one that might.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, this is gonna take a minute.
Yeah, I mean, it can only be, it only needs to be one thing is enough, so if you want to just.
Well, okay.
It just has to be, for new members, in case you guys are confused about what we're talking about here, for, so any change that the planning board recommends to the town council needs to be found to be in harmony with the town's existing comprehensive plan in order to be a legally appropriate change. So what we're talking about now is ways in which, you know, I certainly think that this, these changes are in harmony with the existing comprehensive plan. We just need to make it very clear for the record. And so, we're looking at the comprehensive plan, and, you know, and right at the beginning, there's a vision section, and it's, you know, it's got different headings, and the very first thing, actually, is that, you know, it says, "The vision for the future is," the first heading says, "That Freeport would continue to be a desirable place to live by allowing a desirable," sorry, "allowing a variety of neighborhoods and housing types at a variety of prices, protecting natural and historic resources," and it goes on and on. And so, you know, I think that these changes are really targeted at allowing additional development in the downtown district and, you know, variety of neighborhoods and housing types at a variety of prices. To me, it seems really well aligned, at least in theory.
I'm not very good at this either. I mean, I'm relatively new, too, and so.
It's not easy.
So I move that we accept the proposed amendments, the Chapter 22, Town of Freeport Design Review Ordinance as presented at the public hearing on December 6, 2023, and as amended at the meeting and read by town planner, read by the town planner. That's really all we have to say, and that we find that these changes to be consistent with the, the Town of Freeport Comprehensive Plan, and particularly that it would allow a variety of neighborhoods and housing types to be constructed and support economic development in the downtown area.
And we need a second.
Okay.
Excellent. All in favor? Great.
Done.
Wasn't that easy? Wasn't that easy? Thank you, folks. We are not quite done yet. Even though it's late, we are late, I think, on item number four.
Four.
Which is the election of officers for the position of chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary. And then procedural question, can we vote to table item number five? Or how does it, like, if we wanted to table both four and five, can we do that just to go home?
I don't know what five is. You can table, a lot of times, the boards like to table elections till they have a full board present.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Were you asking, and it's late?
Yep.
That is a good idea.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I can't make a motion, but fine with that.
I move we make a motion to table the election of officers till the next regular meeting?
And a second?
Sure.
Second, great. All in favor? All right.
I'm just gonna clarify, the next regular meeting will be in January, because.
Well, we probably want to do it before then.
Next one's already long gone, long mailed. We're not rescinding the 4,000 notices.
Yeah, yeah, so what, what, what?
Couldn't we do this next week?
Nope.
No, because it's, the agenda has already been set.
Oh, it has to be on the agenda.
Yeah, well, January is fine.
Yep.
January's fine.
Okay.
You don't want to change chairs anyways at a big meeting, so.
We don't want to change chairs under any circumstances.
You, I'm in the, I'm in the afternoon, if not the twilight of my career as the chair. I will warn you all, so.
Okay, well, you don't have to resign before you're not re-elected.
So my motion is.
I am a night owl, but.
That's fine.
Next regular meeting, January 2nd.
Nope, January 3rd, I think.
Oh, January 3rd.
Yeah, council gets.
Council, I messed you up because I said the council date earlier. I'm sorry. January 3rd.
Item number five is persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items. I know we have one. I would ask you to keep it very brief.
I'm.
Okay, like, three minutes.
I wonder why I thought it's gonna be a quick meeting.
Can I?
Never, never.
Yeah. Can I just, before you start, Kristin, say that you emailed me today.
Yes.
And sent some, I honestly, I haven't even had a time to open them yet because I was in the car when they came in.
It's probably just as well.
So, but we did print them out so that the board can have copies. So anything that, and for, for, I didn't read them, but I did forward them. So just for anyone who is, again, anyone ever watching or for anyone on the board, emails about board business do become public and are shared with the whole board, so that there's no, we don't, yeah. Not that I'm suggesting that.
I just didn't know it happened so quickly.
Yeah. Well, yeah, maybe you got lucky today, but yeah, it did. We, I forwarded it right to Cecilia, and she was printing stuff out anyway, so it made it in the queue, and here we are.
Thanks. I'm Kristin Dorsey. I'm here. I'm a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board and the Liaison to the Tree Task Force, and surprise, I have zoning amendment.
Oh, good.
Changes, changes that we've been, that we drafted as a group. We came to one of your workshops a while ago, I think maybe it was last winter. One of the first things we did as a group to start to dive into drafting a tree ordinance, because one does not exist. But before we did that, we started digging around in other ordinances that did exist to just find out where landscaping and trees and tree canopy were addressed. And in doing that, we landed in the zoning ordinance, sections 514 and, what is it, 602. And so we kind of simultaneously were drafting a tree ordinance and trying to align and insert language in the zoning ordinance. Again, some of it is just a little too objective, and we were fortunate to have a member who is a landscape architect, retired, just done it for bazillions of years and seen ordinances and worked in lots of communities. So I guess the next step is, so it's delivered now, that's nice. I don't know what happens next. You review it.
I think.
Invite our members to come, get on an agenda. It's been very unclear to us.
Yeah, so I think there's probably a couple different opportunities here. I think one would be to ask the council for a little bit of direction, to say like, hey, we have this in the mix, the work is, you know, the first draft is, has been undertaken. Do you mind if we spend a little bit of meeting time looking at this? I think that would be one approach, and see if the council says, yeah, go, go for it. And I would, I guess my first inclination, and not that I have all the expertise on this by any stretch of the imagination, but my first inclination would be to go to the council for guidance for how the board spends its time, just because we have so much going on over the next couple of months, but.
So PS, we did go last night.
Okay.
We were on the agenda as an update, and I misunderstood some communications. I thought they were going to have a copy of this in their packets. They did not, so they were all kind of blink-blinking at us. But we kind of ran through our purpose and reasons and wherefores, and so they know it's in the pipe and has been for a while, so they won't be surprised. They know we're, we've kind of been at this for a long time and want to get ahead of downtown development and comprehensive, get comprehensive plan, and it aligns with some of the downtown visioning charters and climate action plan, obviously. So they won't be surprised. So, yeah, I just wanted to show up.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's great to see the, you know, so much of the legwork on it done. And I think it's, yeah, now that we all have copies of it, you know, hopefully everybody has a chance to, to look through it and, you know, get acquainted with it a little bit. And let me talk to Caroline and, you know, talk to John and see, Johnny Egan that is, council chair, and we'll see kind of what the, what the best path forward for moving it through. I mean, this is certainly like.
John is council chair?
He is now, yep, yep, yep. So Dan, John and Dan switched positions. So Dan had been the chair, John had been the vice chair. John also is a former chair.
He's a former chair, yeah.
Yeah, he was chair several, two, three, something years ago. So, but yes, John is now the council chair again. And so, but yeah, I mean, this, you know, it, these are zoning changes, so they would end up before the planning board at some point if they're gonna be put into ordinance language, and then they would go back to the council. So of course, you know, yes, I understand that sometimes the process seems cumbersome, but yeah, I think that's a good next step, is to talk to Caroline and John and figure out what the, you know, how soon we can, we can look at this.
Yeah, and just the last page, all the green text. So everything in green text is what we've added, and then we struck through some existing language. The last green section, I didn't number the pages, sorry, second to last page, and the last page is actually a cut-in page from language that's in the tree ordinance as well. So I don't know if it belongs in here because it's in the tree ordinance. I don't know how all that works. And I was really excited to hear that Cecilia is your town hall liaison, because she can help, too, hopefully.
I can look into it and, you know, see where it would fit, see where it would fit with the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And maybe we can also go back and forth and figure out a cleaner way of where it would be, you know, easier, more appropriate.
They presented a whole package of ideas to the council last night, so we'll need to go back and see how they want to move them forward. They was talking about tree ordinance, you know, everyone ordinance for you, too.
Okay.
But the zoning is a great place to put that kind of, you know, if you're gonna have standards for trees, it belongs partially when we're looking.
Standards for, yeah.
I did give you, so you also have a copy of the tree ordinance, I think, too.
Yep, we do.
Okay, cool.
I'm sorry, the, the green did not print very well, so it printed very dark, so you guys are gonna have to.
That's why, maybe you saw me kind of like, I was, yeah, I figured that out after the first.
Our printer is like, not the best sometimes with the printing color.
Yeah, if you look carefully, you can see the green, the green new text.
Just to clarify, tree ordinance would not be your purview there for reference.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Yep, no, that's a good clarification. All right, thanks, Kristin.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for item number six?
Do a adjourn.
Do a adjourn.
Yes. Do I hear a motion? Yes, and a second, all in favor? Great. All right, thanks, guys, for staying late.
See you next week.
That one will not be quick either. That one actually has the potential to be a bigger cluster bomb than this.
Why? Isn't it all done and un, un?
Why did nobody tell?